Good morning, everyone. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. Sorry to cut off all the great conversation going on, but nine o'clock is our time and we were on TV time, so we've got to start at nine. Again, good morning. My name is Andy Hunthausen. I'll be chairing today. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. His left is Brandy Spangler, who'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Brandy. To my right, soon to be, she's on her way up, and Candace Payne. Okay, well, welcome, Commissioner Candace Payne. And to my right over here is our Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Keegan Shea. Good morning. And our Chief Administrative Officer, Roger Baltz. There are agendas in the front as well as the sign-in sheet. If everyone would sign in, please, prior to leaving today, so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. Again, welcome. And I will turn it over. Whoa, not going to turn it over to you, Mr. Baltz. There are no consent action items. So we'll start with item number three or go to item number three on the agenda, which is a bid opening for magnesium chloride supply. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hunthausen, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachrell, Assistant Director of Public Works. This morning, we have a bid opening for the purchase of magnesium chloride that will be delivered to our bulk holding facility and that our crews will apply over this next season. This morning, we have two bids to open. This first bid that I will open is from We Desk Control of Whitehall, Montana. This bid appears to be fully complete. We have a total unit price per ton of $167.97 for a total extended price of $117,579. The second bid that I will be opening is from Dustbusters Enterprises Incorporated of Evanston, Wyoming. This bid appears to be fully complete. We have a unit price per ton of $152.50 for a total extended price of $106,750. Staff would like to take these two bids under advisement and return on June 18th for a recommendation for award.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And just for folks that are in the room or might be watching today, we open all of our bids in public in this setting most often. And because it's just a cursory view of the bids, we haven't gone through them fully, we take the time to do that. So we hear the initial bid and then we ask staff to take these bids under advisement, make sure that they meet all of our requirements and state requirements, and then bring back a recommendation to the commission. And you're talking about June 18th at our regular scheduled meeting. Great. So Commissioners, any questions about these bids? If not, how about a motion to ask staff to take them under advisement and bring back a recommendation on the 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, ask staff to take the bids under advisement and bring back a recommendation to the commission on the 18th of June at our regular scheduled meeting. Further discussion, Commissioners? Oh, a public comment? Yes, sorry. Is there any public comment related to this? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, thank you very much. No public comment? Commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Good catch, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a grant award agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Agriculture, Montana State Department of Agriculture. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Morning, Commissioners. My name is Christian Leonard. I'm the Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed Coordinator. And before you this morning is a grant agreement from the Montana Department of Agriculture Weed Trust Fund for the Landers Fork Alice Creek Noxious Weed Cooperative 2024-041G. The purpose of this project is to perform noxious weed control activities in the project area, which is, and I apologize, but I would like to make a correction, 8,300 acres is the project area, not 34374. Within Lewis and Clark, the project will begin in 2024 and utilize integrated weed control methods, including monitoring, education, cutting, and herbicide applications. This agreement is executed as of the date of the last signature and is in effect through October 31st, 2025. The total grant award is $17,176. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Oh, one more time with the acreage? Eight thousand?
It's 8,300 square acres. And it is six landowners that are participating, so it's the cumulative acreage of all the landowners put together, so.
Good. Good catch on that as well. Okay, Commissioners, if there are no questions? Any public comment on this Noxious Weed Trust Fund project grant award agreement? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the grant award agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Montana Department of Agriculture, as explained by and corrected by Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award agreement as presented with correction? Any further discussion, Commissioners? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Sorry, I can't write and talk at the same time. Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-40 to levy and assess the Pine Hills Road Maintenance District 1990-12. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Mekus, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $275 upon each benefiting property within the Pine Hills Road Improvement District. With a total of 35 benefiting properties, a total of $9,625 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. This district is located just in the green area on your screen. And it's just to the south of Canyon Ferry Road, just to the east of Spokane Creek Road. The Pine Hills District was created through a citizen-initiated petition in 1990 to improve and maintain Pine Hills Drive and Pine Crest Drive. The subdivision, sorry, I already said that, excuse me. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow removal and sanding as needed, grading, gravel maintenance, and drainage maintenance. The maintenance assessment was set at $88.14 per property per year in 1992. It was raised in 2016 to $125 per property per year. We have seen a large increase in everything related to road maintenance, however, primarily in road grading, which has doubled over the past two years. These increases in maintenance have resulted in a projected shortfall for district maintenance. An increase to the assessment will ensure annual maintenance in Pine Hill, in the Pine Hills District can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. This is a total increase of $150 per property per year. An evening meeting was held at the Tri Lakes Fire Station on January 24th, 2024, with a total of 21 attendees. I will just say that of all the meetings we've had for these RID increases, this was the best attended meeting and generated, by far, the most robust discussion that we had regarding an increase. And I appreciate the citizens' participation in that meeting. It was very helpful. Legal notice of the increase and the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 18th and May 25th, 2024. As of just this morning, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
Just one, if I might. You mentioned that the grading is what's really boosting these special improvement districts up. Just operating the graders or the equipment? Is that, is that, that's the most of it? Or is there something added in there that we don't know about?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, I believe that, you know, the increase in grading, it happened a little bit after we saw the big increase in the kind of the oil-related products. But I think fuel drives that cost. The payment of an operator drives that cost. As we've seen inflation go up, you know, all of these services, all of these contractor prices, you know, also go up. I don't think that, you know, it seems that the pool of contractors that we have available to do this work, the prices are all within about 10 to 20 cents, you know, between each other per linear foot for grading. So they're all right in that ballpark for the most part. It's just the price that we have today in that particular service.
But you had indicated, I think, that it's nearly doubled in, or to what we can get someone to come in there, contractors come in and do that work.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. The prices that we saw, you know, prior to about 2023 were about, you know, anywhere from 30 cents to 50 cents per linear foot for grading. That cost has gone up to anywhere from 90 to about a $1.20 per linear foot for grading. And it's not just grading. I mean, if you think about our chip seal costs, in 2021, we had a cost of about $1.70 per square yard for chip seal. In 2022, we saw that go up to $4.40 with that big inflation bubble. And we've since seen that come down to about the $3 mark. But, you know, generally has doubled as well. So that just seems to be how prices have gone with roadwork, particularly in the last few years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I figured it out.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to piggyback on what you mentioned about the meeting. That is impressive that that many people. You said how many totals? 30 some total?
I, thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a total of 35 properties in this particular district, and we had 21 attendees at that meeting. Just a great turnout and a great discussion was had.
Good, that is really good turnout and good on all of the folks in the community because it makes a big difference in how we move forward. Often, as we've seen, we'll have a couple hundred potential residents and only a handful show up. So it's really nice to see that percentage come and be part of the process. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it was the only meeting that I felt like I did not schedule enough time. Oftentimes Caleb and I wrap those up and we sit around for about 40 minutes until we have the next one. And this one could have gone on for another 30 minutes or so. It was, it was an excellent discussion.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, with that, how about public comment on this proposed increase? Is there any public comment? Any public comment? If you have public comment, just come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record and we'll hear you out. Any public comment? Okay. Oh, please, come on up. All right, you bet. No worries, you're welcome to.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Glenn Gormley, and I'm a resident of the Pine Hills Drive of the Road District. And I just wanted to say I sure appreciate it, Public Works, coming to our, you know, area and having a meeting and discussing that with us. It was, it was, it was great. It was very informative and appreciative, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your comments. Any other public comment? Any other public comment on this item?
My name's Guy.
Please come to the mic. We're recording it, so you got to be right up there.
My name's Guy McCarthy. I live in the Pine Hills Estates. And it's fine that we have all this printing of money and our things go up in price, but the value of the dollar has gone down to rock bottom. And I'm not getting paid, I'm retired, so I'm not getting paid anymore. And they've more than doubled the price. That's, that's not right. That's all I have to say. Make it right.
Thank you, really appreciate your comments. Any other public comment? On this item? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners. We are talking about Resolution 2024-40 to levy and assess the Pine Hills Road Maintenance District Number 1990-12. Further discussion? How about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-40 to levy and assess the Pine Hills Road Maintenance District Number 1990-12, as explained by Ms. Mekus.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion?
Just, I understand the frustration about prices. It's, this inflation is worse than they're telling us out of DC. And it's something we have to deal with if we're going to, if we're going to continue to do the services that we've contracted to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just to add on to Commissioner Rolfe's remarks, the, the price of everything goes up and go to the grocery store, and I'd like to tell them, by golly, you shouldn't raise our grocery prices. That's not within the realm of our control. What we try to do is control what we can. And as Jessica Mekus expressed, and we see this time after time, they do the best they can, as my dear old dad used to say, the oats are always cheaper if they've been through the horse once. So yeah, you could probably get cheaper maintenance, but it would probably have to be redone sooner. So I think our staff does a good job of taking, of getting the most bang for their buck. It recognizes our, the folks out there that live there that have to pay for this. But those people also benefit from having the roads in the condition they're in so that they can get to the hospital on time or get to work on time. Or should they want to sell their property? The value of the property is substantiated if there is decent roads in and out of the place. It's just something all of us have to do when we are property owners. If you don't keep it up, you will suffer the consequences. So I really appreciate the fact that 22 people showed up at those hearings. I know it's very frustrating to have these company, these community meetings and then nobody shows up and then everybody gets mad because we didn't, we were not able to do the work that reflects what they see as their, the majority wishes out there. They're not mind readers. They went out, talked to folks, people came in and attended, and that's the way we get things done in Lewis and Clark County. And I know Jessica Mekus takes this very seriously, as do all our folks out in the Public Works Department. So I'm sorry, the price is going up, but the price is going up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. And I just want to say thanks to Jessica and all the folks. Again, commend them for coming out and participating in the process. It makes a difference and it helps to guide our decision-making process, so thank you for that. Commissioners, we have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the resolution. Further discussion of any kind? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-41 to levy and assess the Rosendale Rural Improvement District Number 2005-8. Good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, Jessica Mekus, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today, you will be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment of $435 upon each developed benefiting property and $217.50 upon each undeveloped benefiting property within the Rosendale Rural Improvement District. With a total of 19 benefiting properties, a total of $7,395 will be assessed annually to fund maintenance of the district. This district is in blue on your screen, just, just to the west of the district that we just discussed on the previous item, again, just off Spokane Creek Road to the south of Canyon Ferry Drive. The Rosendale RID was created through a citizen-initiated petition in 2005 to improve and maintain Rosendale Road. This district is located about a third of a mile south on Spokane Creek Road from Canyon, Canyon Ferry Road. Maintenance provided by this district includes snow removal and sanding as needed, grading, gravel maintenance, and drainage maintenance. The maintenance assessment has been $62.50 per undeveloped property and $375 per developed property since 2017. However, again, with the increase that we've seen in road grading over the last year, combined with the other impacts of inflation, we show a projected budget shortfall for district maintenance. An increase to the assessment will ensure annual maintenance in the Rosendale RID can be completed as detailed in the resolution that created the district. This is a total increase of $155 per undeveloped property and an increase of $60 per developed property per year. An evening meeting was held with residents to discuss the need for the increase at the Tri Lakes Fire Station on January 24th, 2024, with a total of five attendees. Legal notice of the increase and the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 18th and May 25th, 2024. As of June 3rd, 2024, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners, for Jessica? Questions?
No.
All right, hearing no questions at this time. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Public comment? Please come forward to the microphone. Just need your name and address for the record, and you have the floor. Welcome.
Diana Clausen, I'm at 5860 Gindale, which is not on Rosendale. And I missed the January 24th meeting. Sorry about that. But I wanted to bring up, and it would be nice if you had road engineers around here. What happens when the improvements on Rosendale destroy the rest of the road? The water from Rosendale running down to where the roads come together? So it's Gindale to the Spokane Creek Road?
Yeah, just address us and we'll ask staff to come up and answer any questions they can after you're, after you're done, so, but go ahead.
Well, I've been there for 23 years, so I can go back through a lot of history. And what we're doing on Gindale is probably a good example of how not to do it because it's not an RID. But it really made the lower part of the word, road, much, much worse. It turned it from a two-lane into a one-lane. And there it sits because my understanding is that the RID doesn't cover that part of the road.
Only what you see in blue there.
Yeah. So it's sort of a general question. What happens when you do something up here that makes something down here much worse? And it's clear that that's the cause.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Yes, thank you. And we'll, it's after public comment, we'll try and answer questions if we can.
Thank you.
But thank you and good to see you. All right, how about other public comment? Other public comment? Okay, Jessica, maybe a question we can answer about impacts and how we look at that and...
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and Ms. Clausen, thank you for the concern and bringing that, bringing that issue up. It's challenging, you know, in a situation like this where you come off of Spokane Creek onto Gindale, and then you turn off of that road onto a road that is covered through an RID. Gindale is not part of the district. It's not maintained as part of the district. You know, it could be its own Rural Improvement District if folks were interested in setting something like that up. You know, drainage, though, is one of the things that is included in the Rosendale RID and maintaining drainage to maintain the improvements, you know, on that road. That's something that I will talk with Caleb Marcus, our RID Construction Coordinator, about to see if, if on that, that slope, if there's water that is coming off of Rosendale and then impacting the other, the other roadway. And if there's something that we can do as far as, you know, some kind of a ditch maintenance or other drainage maintenance item to potentially mitigate some of that effect. I will have to see, though, if that's something that we can do within the bounds of the Rosendale Road RID. So that's something we'll just have to assess on the ground. And I'd be happy to follow up, you know, with what we determine to be possible or not after that, after that inspection.
Right, thank you. And it is a good point that only the items that are listed and clearly demonstrated in the, in the resolution are items that we can spend dollars from the district on. So if it's something beyond that, we can't spend those dollars on that. However, it's a good question about whether the, the maintenance that we're doing there, if it's impacting other things and, and if we can look at that, that would be grand, I think, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, Commissioner?
Jessica, I think based on what I've learned in the last two years, this, the Rosendale Road District was organized in 2005. And should the Rosendale Road District and the people that live out there decide, they really need to include the lot to, and I've got the map here. Could you, the map, the lots that are specifically adjacent to the Rosendale Road RID, and I'm talking about the one that's between the Spokane Creek Road and, yes, right in there. So it's that one and then, and however many other landowners. I think this is something that the landowners need to go out and see if they could get the other people to become part of this RID. And if so, I understand we would have to abandon the existing RID and create a new one whole cloth. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, you're correct in that if we were to include additional benefiting properties in an existing RID, we would have to start, start the process over. So you would have to circulate that petition. You'd have to go through this series of three public hearings to set up the district. And the reason for that is because those properties that are not included in this district did not have the opportunity to comment or object during district creation when Rosendale, the Rosendale RID was created in 2005. In this particular instance... In this particular instance, the road coming off of Spokane Creek Road is Gindale, Gindale Road. And while everybody that's in the Rosendale Road RID would benefit from that particular portion of Gindale Road. If we went beyond Rosendale Road to include the, the further Gindale Road as it extends west or east, excuse me. That would have to be its own district because the folks using Rosendale to the south would not benefit from work on Gindale to, to the north. So we can look at that, that split, but you know, potentially what you could have is, is, you know, the, the Rosendale Road RID being dissolved and including that first portion of Gindale and then the, you know, to Rosendale. You'd have to look at the benefiting properties and who would benefit and how you would potentially be able to set that up. But that's certainly something that we could explore if, you know, we're seeing a lot of impact on that first section of, of Gindale.
What kind of, another question. What kind of condition is the end of the Gindale Road in, I mean, is that, does that need work?
Um, possibly. Mr. Chair Commissioner, I, I can't speak to the condition of the full extent of Gindale Road. I don't know. But that's certainly something that we could, could take a look at and report back to the commission on.
So is it up to the county to get this Gindale Road under control as part of the RID that we're working on? Isn't that something that the citizens that live out there need to initiate and say, we want this, these roads fixed? We can't depend on anybody else to, to do it. We need to do it. And so the lady who stood up, whose name I can't remember, but she's hiding behind. Oh, there she is. Okay. Ms. Clausen. Okay. I'm just thinking, I've worked with the people over there in the road district and if you suggest to them that there's something like this that you'd like to get done, they will bend over backwards to see if they can't get it moving along. So it's kind of up to you and your neighbors. That's all.
Mr. Chair Commissioner Payne, I think, you know, if the folks on Gindale are interested in a Rural Improvement District, we can absolutely take a look. What we do with that process is Caleb Marcus goes out and takes a look at the initial condition of the road.
Is he an engineer?
Caleb is not an engineer, but he does have decades of experience with, with road improvements and road maintenance. And when we do have any kind of question about engineering, if there was, let's say hydrology engineering needed or some kind of an analysis needed, we could work with an engineering firm. We can also, Mr. Carlin, Dan Carlin, our county engineer is, is located, his office is right between Caleb and I. So we do have that proximity and, and the ability to confer with, with Dan as needed on, on any of our projects.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any other questions? Just to exhaust the opportunity, we'll take any other public comment. Did you have further public comment? Would you state your name and address for the record again, when you get up here, just for the, for our recording?
It's Diana Clausen, 5860 Gindale. I didn't want to open that huge can of worms because it is a huge can of worms. And my understanding is that Gindale, where it turns off, is a private road. And that's a whole nother issue. My, my specific question was when improvement on Rosendale results in washing out of part of that common road used Gindale? Because when they come together, they're, that's a pretty, that's a two-lane road almost. That Gindale becomes a much bigger road because it feeds on how many, I asked how many residents off of the blue, 19? That's a very specific question. And it seems like if there's a way to improve the engineering on that, then we wouldn't have as much to deal with down there. Requiring so many people to agree on a certain thing. Harder than building a nuclear reactor, right? Right? Am I clear?
Yes. Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay.
Yeah. And public comment for the, those that are here, we're, it's really not a back and forth question and answer. We take public comment. We consider that public comment and our decision-making move on. But I wanted to make sure that we were fully clear on what people were concerned about. And I think Megas got that information and is going to look into that further. And Commissioners, the question before us is whether Resolution 2024-41 should be approved or not. And that is where we are now. So any further discussion, questions, concerns? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2024-41 to levy and assess the Rosendale Rural Improvement District number 2005-8 as presented by Jessica Megas.
Second, moved in second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Again, thank you, Jessica, and all of those who participated in the meetings and who have come today to share their thoughts with us. Appreciate that. And hopefully we'll continue to improve our work out there. Anything for the Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our fiscal year 2025 budget issues review and direction. And before we take that on Commissioners, I'm going to take a five-minute recess and use restroom, get some more coffee and we'll let the room clear or fill, either way, and we'll. All right. Let's reconvene. Thank you everyone for your patience and giving us a little break there. We are now at item number seven on our agenda, which is fiscal year 2025 budget issues review and direction. And prior to turning it over to our CA, FO, I'm going to turn over to our CAO for some preliminary.
I hate acronyms.
Our Chief Administrative Officer, Roger Balts, is going to give us a kind of a opening and overview of where we are. Mr. Balts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So this item on the agenda, we're back before you today to just continue with our ongoing process of building the budgets that are associated with our county operations. So Commissioners, throughout the month of May, at several different public meetings, just to summarize, you've received many budget presentations. And I'd like to begin by saying thank you to all of the department directors, all of the finance staff, all of the supervisors, all of the elected officials who have been working so hard actually since February, if not even before that, to put their preliminary budgets in place. They've worked very hard for us and they've brought forward very responsible recommendations for you to be considering. And as a part of our budget process, we're working to put those budgets together right now. And today is just an ongoing part of that process. So Commissioners, I want to remind you that usually in late January, our, our budget process is actually a budget cycle. It does not end throughout the fiscal year. So we're preparing budgets, we're implementing budgets, we're overseeing budgets throughout the fiscal year. So it's actually a budget cycle is the way we handle our budget. But Mr. Cornwell, back in February, as late January, February, sent out an email to all of our employees and people who are working to prepare their budgets regarding the preliminary budget expectations and direction from the county commissioners. And I know we've talked about this many times Commissioners, but I just want to remind you of a few basic things. So that message was asking for our, our budget preparers on the budget preparations for fiscal year 2025, for the personnel budgets to include a cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. So Commissioners, all of the budget presentations that you've received have included this desire that we have for a COLA, C-O-L-A, cost of living adjustment for all of our employees of 3.5%. A COLA is something that as an organization, we have always considered very important and crucial to being an employer of choice and also making sure that we're competitive for retaining our employees. And we've done it for many, many years, dating back a very long time. So again, the 3.5% COLA is intended for our budget for the coming fiscal year. Commissioners, I want to remind you that we usually implement any kind of a COLA at the beginning of our fiscal year, which is only about a month away. So that 3.5% COLA I'm stressing is a part of the budget preparation. For the health insurance premiums and other fixed costs, our finance department provided those to the different departments and different elected offices for them to include in their budgets. So they've been included in the presentations that you've received. And that includes things like rent, insurance cost. And we're going to be talking about insurance a little bit later here as Mr. Cornwell gets into his presentation. And one of the other things too, that we wanted to make sure we stressed this year was that we pointed out that inflation was continuing, continuing to impact our operations. And we asked all of our operations and people presenting their budgets to maintain the status quo and hold the line on spending wherever they could and not adding new positions for the coming fiscal year. So I wanted to remind you that that was the message that was sent out. Now, having said all of that Commissioners, you'll see some recommendations today for you to consider. But those are some of the basic elements that inform the recommendations that you're getting today. But the county commissioners, you should discuss any things that you would like to ask questions would be my suggestion to you. We'll answer them as best we can. And we're looking for your direction and your concurrence or your changes. And we're ready to implement them as we talk about things today. And the last thing that I'd like to mention is we always try to pay close attention in our financial operations to our cash carry forward. Or another way of saying it is our reserves that we establish for our funds. We always like to focus on and have a target of 90 days or 25%. In some funds, it can be less than that at times. And at some funds, it can be more than that in times. But that's part of our fiscal philosophy that we've used for many, many years here in Lewis and Clark County. And I just really want to stress that this is a really positive conversation to have with you today. Our budget preparation is going very well. Can't say enough appreciation again for everybody who's worked so hard on it and all the different departments we have. So having said that Commissioners, we have had some parts of the presentations to you that you've received in the past meetings that have helped us produce this list today of what we've described as new requests or unique requests that we want to discuss with you. And we have a number that we are recommending approval and we have a number that we are not recommending approval. But we'd like to discuss those with you. And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as a process today, I know we talked a little bit about this, but maybe the way to handle this today for efficiency, if it's agreeable to you, would be to ask Mr. Cornwell to go through his presentations and, and possibly begin with the list of items that we are recommending approval for you today. And you could handle those as a group. And then after we've had that discussion in your direction, then move on to the items that we are not recommending for approval. So on the items that we are recommending for approval, as we get to it and Mr. Cornwell goes through it, one of the things that I'd like to suggest to you today is that we take a recommendation that we have regarding our group health fund and how we're, the strategy to deal with that. We may want to take that and set it aside from the approvals, but proceed with all of the rest, rest of them and then discuss that one. Mr. Chair, does that sound agreeable to you?
Yes, I was going to suggest the same. Thank you for, for recommending that. And if that's agreeable with the other Commissioners, we'll set that one aside out of the approval list for further discussion. For sure. And any others that the commission wants to discuss further. But prior to that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cornwell. And if you have a presentation for us, that would be great. And then we'll consider the approval list first and, and make sure that we're all in concurrence there. And we can move forward from that into the discussion of those that may have a little more concern.
Go ahead. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. And just to echo Roger's words, the work that the departments have put into the budget this year is, it's a lot. And I appreciate every, everyone that has put in the work. And it's been, as you can see, the budgets are in good shape. And, and that's due to the, the good work that they do out in department land or office land. So much appreciated. Everybody out there has been great to work with and, and I, I can't say, say enough about the, the work that they do. Just like Roger was saying, that we're just going to go through this list. We're going to start with the approvals. We, we have a two-page list, but it unfortunately, we can't fit both the entire first page on the screen for the public to see. So we're going to start with the first half of the first page. And we'll go through those approvals that we're, that the administration is, is recommending. We'll start with the personnel approvals for Justice Court. There's a promotional plan that they are, that they presented to you. That's $7,500. We're recommending approval there. We're, and then for DES, they're also asking for additional costs or payroll costs associated with deployment. Those costs will be reimbursed either through the state or the feds. So it's a net zero effect on our budgets. So we're, we're recommending a approval there as well. Moving down to the, the middle level there, we have transfers on an annual basis, the, the county transfers from the All Purpose Fund or the General Fund, $50,000 into the fairgrounds to, to help with capital projects and little things. And that's just something that's been there for years and years and years. We recommend approval there as well. Roger alluded to the liability and property insurance issues that we've seen and those costs have skyrocketed through the past few years. We have an annual contribution from the All Purpose Fund. That's 200,000. We're just going to maintain status quo with that. But we are also asking for a contingency fund transfer from the contingency fund that the, the county has for 250,000 to make up for the increase. We are, we're expect, we're experiencing a increase in our premiums at 250,000. That is the approval list for that first half of the first page. And then we'll go through the next page. We can go through, so the, oh, so on an annual basis, we, or a buy, or every other year, we'll do a market adjustment, market analysis of staff. And we usually reserve some funds to be able to pay for those salary increases. And we're recommending 80,000 there. We'll put the permissive levy discussion to the side if you guys want. And as you can see, we're, we're asking for approval to max the permissive levy to increase it a million dollars to, to handle the group health fund budget issues that there, we're experiencing there. On an annual basis, we also have reserved 200,000 for unanticipated expenses. That's something that we always do and it's just been there. We want to make sure that you're aware of it and it's there for your approval. And then below this, I don't know if you want me to go through every single line here.
I don't know. We need to, we could just ask the commission if there's any that they'd like to pull out or discuss on this list. These are kind of annual contributions that we, we make. And some, a few of them are set asides for specific projects, those kinds of things. So.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, just, these are, these are miscellaneous items that the, the commission has approved every year. Some of them have slight increases. Some of them are not increased at all from year to year. They're just the, the standard year-over-year amount. And if, if you want to get into any item, we can, we can. So we, we're recommending approval for all items except for the Exa Rail Authority for 10,000.
Right. Thank you. Okay.
I just have one.
Commissioner?
Frank, the youth, Montana Youth Homes. I'm trying to remember what in the heck that is. And could you remind me? I, I know I'm supposed to know this and I.
Mr. Chairman, we'll probably add a little bit more color to it. I believe it's the Margaret Stewart Home that the county owns just over here. And we, we contribute 30,000 a year to, to help fund that operation.
Yes. And it's a. Yes, and it's a um, Margaret Stewart Shelter is a youth shelter. Typically, um, uh, the majority of the, the youth that uh, moved through that facility are tied to our youth courts. And um, it is an alternative for uh, shelter for them for a short period of time. The building is owned by the county, uh, it's run by Montana Youth Homes, and we've contributed to that um, process annually, the entire time I've been here.
Okay, I wasn't complaining about spending the money. I was because of the term Montana is in it, I was thinking, is that a state-run facility? Or, and that's not, and thank you. That's what I needed, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions about that list? If not, we can move on, Mr. uh, Cornwell, for the next section.
Hey, should I move to the second for approvals on the second page? Okay.
Finish those out and.
So the, for the second page that you, the commissioners have in, in front of them, this is for all other funds that are outside of the general fund, so this doesn't affect the all-purpose cash flow balance. The planning department was out, uh, asking for a promotional plan for staff there at $15,000. We're recommending approval there. They, they have a good, well-funded budget. We'll move down to the promotional plan for district court. They're also asking for uh, $7,000 for promotional plan for staff. We're recommending approval there. Uh, public safety, this year, they plan on buying a significant amount of um, uh, patrol cars. They have an aging fleet that needs to be replaced, and they, they've done a good job of holding on to these assets year over year over year. Uh, but it's just time to replace um, significant portion of those uh, assets. And so when they do so, they incur quite a bit of in costs with upgrading. As you know, when you see a sheriff's vehicle, it's not just a base vehicle. It has cages and lights and all uh, all courts, all, all kinds of upgrades to it. So this is the, the $97,000 is associated with those vehicles, and also the $33,000 um, is associated with those vehicles. So, so each one of them gets a laptop. There's these, you've seen them. They're very robust and, and, and they have to operate um, very effectively, so they're quite expensive. But it's a one-time cost, it should go away next year, so this is just an increase, and we're recommending approval there. The trap, the, the public safety fund is uh, also asking for increase in travel um, this year for $48,000, the, for travel for training. And um, there was $14,000 of unanticipated travel costs. We're, we're not recommending approval of those amounts, we're just recommending just the, the 34,000 of the 48,000. Um, oh, and we all know that the public safety uh, fund bought a new command vehicle, and that new command vehicle has a warranty associated with it. Uh, $32,000, it's a new large expense to their fund, and we're recommending approval there. It's a good, it is good use of funds there to protect that asset. It's a million-dollar asset, so this is, this is good use of those funds. And then the last two items are for TASER contracts, um, for $40,000 and $20,000. We're recommending approvals on those as well.
Okay, so commissioners, I'll ask one more time, just on the recommended approval column, is there any anomalies other than we are going to pull out the permissive, the increase of the health fund, a group health fund discussion? Other than that, in the approval column, any other questions, concerns? Uh, we can set that aside as um, essentially uh, concurring with the staff recommendation thus far.
If I might.
Please, Mr.
Um, the, we're talking here 2.8 on the front pa, first page and uh, and 270, roughly 275, so about, about a total of about three. What is that, about a, a little over three mi, three million, right?
Uh, are you looking at the?
I, oh, I, we got to take out the 1 million, so about, you take out the million on the health fund. It, it comes to uh, 1.8.
Million and.
75 roughly, about two, a little over 2 million.
Correct. So just a little help there. If you go to your last page, that is the, the all-purpose funds cash flow, and if I want to focus you in on the bottom right half of that page, you can see where we're planning, where the.
This is a third page that you handed us this morning.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I.
Oh, yes, sorry, Commissioner. It was, I just set it on your desk.
Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
I don't know where I put mine.
Apologize for the confusion.
All right. Go ahead.
So of all items, so when you're looking at this cash flow, all the items that the administration is recommending for approval have been adopted into this cash flow. So with those items fully implemented and fully budgeted for, they are going to result in a 26.9% cash ba, ending cash balance for the all-purpose fund. And you can see that that, that means that we're going to be around 363,000 over our target. To the good.
To the good. Yes. So that, for the all-purpose fund, our goal is to have a 25% reserve, and this 363,411 is that much plus over the reserve. That's over the reserve.
Correct, 363,000, and I would just.
The targeted reserve.
The target, and that's the minimum target, so we try to, we try to keep it above the 25%, so.
Sure.
This is getting a little bit close for comfort, but yeah, we're, we're there.
Gotcha. We're in the safety zone.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions about the approval column?
So run that back to me again, now that I've got this in front of me. Um, where do, where does this show, where that approval column about 200, about, about 2 million, where does that show here?
So it's going to be in, so if you're looking at that third page.
On the third page, yes.
Those are going to affect the personnel call, uh, row, so if you go down right about half or halfway down the, the spreadsheet there, it says personnel costs.
Okay.
So your personnel costs that we've, are suggesting for approval, all of those costs have been included in that 10.5 million dollar uh, number there. The, all the operating, operational costs that we're recommending for approval are in that 4.3 million dollar number. Um, there are no fixed charges that we're recommend, uh, addressing here today. And then your operating transfers um, are being, are affecting that 2.3 million dollar line item. So that's where they all land. So if you, if you change, you deviate from the administration's recommendations, it will change that ending cash number. So if you, if you want to add something to approve, that cash number will, will be affected by that in, in total. Just, just to be clear.
Yeah. Unless there's another funding source.
Unless there's another funding source, yeah.
Right, would, if I could ask you, um, do you have an estimate on what additional money will be coming in this year based on new properties that are, have not been previously assessed? And, and new um, renovations that haven't been included before?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that is a great question. I have it, I have an estimate of about 2 and 1/2%. Um, last year, we were estimating 5%, and we got uh, 4% of an increase in, of new assets, so that's new buildings, new. I mean, you go over by Winko and that big giant building that's being built over there, that, that would be included in.
So for the public, things that weren't on the tax roll last year that are on this year, that's new taxable item.
New items. So I'm, I am being very conservative in my estimate, so, but this is early on in the budget process when it comes to uh, the Department of Revenue certifying those increases. So the Department of Revenue comes in, they, they look at our county, county, and they see what has come in, and they, they let us know what the increase is, and we don't get to know that number until August. So we will be bringing those numbers to you in August or September um, to, to show what happened with those um, certified values or increases for the county. So I'm being conservative because I was a little disappointed in what, where we landed last year with the increase. And it's, it's out of our hands. It's just, it's just something that we wait for the Department of Revenue to, to do their assessment and, and let us know. We do know the portion, the amount of the um, uh, inflationary factor, and this year, the inflationary factor increase is 2.8%, which is the highest ever. Um, and that has been adopted into this budget as well.
So roughly what you're, what you're saying is that on the projected 2024 fiscal year, um, taxes and special assessments. If I take that 88.369870 and multiply it by um, 1.025, I'm going to come pretty close.
Yeah.
To, to that number. So you've included that estimated um, increase in there, in that number.
Yes. Commissioner, and Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, the, the revenue estimates that we have are always very conservative. We try to make sure that we have enough room for, for error, just in case, like last year, what happened was that our growth factor was on our, overestimated, but we had enough room in the budgets that, so we didn't have to come back to you and ask for budget amendments or anything. So we, we protect ourselves there when, when it comes to our estimates.
So the, the la, the last, what you're telling me is the, the last year from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24, um, the actual amount of money we took in in taxes to run county operations increased by that, the difference between where it says budget and and action, budget '24 and actual, no wait.
Yes, so there was an, it was an increase from uh, actuals of '23 to the budgeted amount of '24, yes.
Okay. And the same thing will happen.
So our, our, our.
Yes.
Our tax income from '22 to '23 was virtually the same.
Yes, uh.
Very little change there.
That was, so that, so Commissioner, you have to be, we got to be careful with the actual amounts. They can be a little bit uh, fickle because that is what you actually received in that year. If there was any taxes that were being held off on, they would have been um.
Protests.
Protests. Those can end up landing in the next year. So it's, you're kind of dubious when you're looking at the actuals, um, so it, year-over-year, but we are seeing uh, increases year-over-year in the, in the taxes received, so.
Well, I, I had done some, some calculating, and it looked like uh, in our particular case, according to the tax figures, the, the, the tax receipt numbers for county government that was, that was put together by the Montana Taxpayers Association, that, that we only got, actually got about 4 and 1/2% increase last year.
Correct.
While the whole county, including schools and city, city operations uh, moved up about 20%. We, as a county or government, only, only got an increase of about 4 and, 4 and 1/2%. Is that?
Correct. Uh, Chairman, Commissioner, so primarily the uh, homeowners in, uh, increases by a significant amount, and it was about 20 to, yeah, 20 to 30%, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but it was a significant amount. But that does not relate directly to our budget and taxes. That's just, that's just the calculation on how it's split up between the taxpayers. So, so yes, if you're a homeowner, you, you got the lion's share of the increase.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks for explaining that. So I'm going to come back to the approval column, and if there aren't any further discussion in the approval column, um, we'll move on from that, and we'll talk about um, those items that were recommended or not approval. So let's go through those and start, and, and we also added in for discussion, the uh, group health fund.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in and add to what's going on here. Do you feel like the commissioners are ready to concur with what you've heard in the approval column so that we can get that determination before moving on any further?
You're talking about taking, taking some sort of action that we concur.
Yes, please.
Okay, so.
I, I'd like to kind of see the whole thing before we make a, take any.
Very well.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's.
So the.
I, I would, in fact, I would even like personally, like to take a, a couple of days before, to look it all over before we take action. But I, it depends on what the, what you two would prefer to.
Okay. Well, we, we can discuss that as we go forward, so. Um, but right now, in terms of those things that are in the, in the approval column, there's not uh, any further discussion you want to have at this time. And we can, we can move on from, at least in a discussion perspective. So it sounds like we're going to wait, but we'll talk about those items that are in the uh, recommended not to approve column. Um, Mr. Cornwell, we, I guess we can start with the uh, first one on the list, which is the county attorney's request.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want, just for clarity, do we want to go through uh, each item and just clarify uh, the commission's direction on each one of these? Or do you want to go through just, just like we did with the approvals?
Um, well, I think we want to go through, through these, I, I, we can take the um, capital request from Public Works maybe as a block, but for discussion purposes, but um.
I'll just, I'll read it right through.
Talk about any of them individually, we can sure talk about them individually, but.
Okay, so I'll go back to the first page. So as you can see in the, on the first page, the first half of the first page, uh, administration is recommending to not approve the FTE increase for uh, the county attorney and that, at, at a cost of 9,000, $9,500. And then the capital requested increases for Public Works, um, is, we are also recommending not to approve.
Oh, I thought we were going to discuss them.
As a whole.
Individually.
We can do that.
So commissioners, is there a discussion around the first one? Around the county attorney's request? I, I have some discussion. I, I shared that with uh, both you and Mr. Balt. Um, I thought the county attorney made a compelling argument for um, um, a needed, needed uh, help there. Um, our job is to make sure that our offices and departments are able to serve the public adequately. Um, I, I don't know. Well, I guess I'll say this, in that, uh, in, in the presentation by the county attorney's office, and it is one of, it's one of the funds that is completely out of the general fund, right? Funded from the general fund, other than if they got a particular grant to do a project or something like that. But the FTE are funded out of the general fund. And um, whether we support this request or not ultimately, I just want to have the discussion because from listening to the county attorney, it was evident to me that um, I think he made the comment, you know, jeez, if I really ask for what I need, I need like four more attorneys and this kind of thing, but we know that that's not the reality right now, and so we're asking for at least a step in the direction. And so I guess what, whether we fund this or not, what was evident to me is that um, as we grow as a community and as our, the caseload for the county attorney's office, for the courts increases, uh, we're going to have to um, grow our capacity to provide those services over time, whether that's this year, next year, or whatever it's going to be. But I want to just sound the alarm about, I guess, that we need to make sure that we're. sound the alarm about, I guess, that we need to make sure that we're looking at those needs as they come forward is my, and I'm probably, I think I'd be pretty accurate in saying this in that over the next years, the, the workload on the county attorney's office, the workload on our justice courts or district courts for that matter, they're not under our purview, but just for, for discussion purposes. It's going to grow. And so it's only so many hours in the day and so many things we can do. And so I think it's something that we need to think about addressing as a commission, that we need to make sure that there is a capacity there to handle the caseload over time. So whether that's starting now with this, or whether that's saying, hey, we need to make sure that we're studying this issue and considering it for next year's budget. Um, I'm, I'm open to that discussion, but I just wanted to have the discussion with the commission and make sure that uh, uh, we're not uh just ignoring the requests from our departments. And it sounded pretty compelling to me that they, they need some help. They feel like they're pretty stressed right now. So Commissioners, any comments or thoughts about?
And I, I think there are just, Mr. Chair, if I might, I, I just think there are a lot of areas where it would be wonderful to have extra money. But I think our, our taxpayers have made some pretty strong statements that they don't want to, they, they have kind of hit the limit on how much they want us to spend. And um um, I, I, we've got, we've got a lot of roads that we'd like to be, get fixed and, and bridges that we'd like to get repaired. Which I think are every bit as important as as the, the, the shortage of people in the, in, in the county attorney's office. And we just have got to try to hold, hold the cost to the taxpayers. And uh, you know, I think they sent a, I was, I was absolutely amazed at the, at the, how um all of the mill levies here in the Holland Valley went down this last time because the people, the taxpayers voted against it. And I think they sent us a message that they don't want us to be raising taxes. And uh, so we've got to find ways to trim and, and part of that is not adding people. Uh, and as much as the need is there, I think the need is there in almost every area of our budget and we've, we've just got to try to hold the line and do the best we can with the money that's available.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any, anything else, Commissioner?
I've uh been thinking about this particular one, the additional FTE for the county attorney's office as a victim assistance coordinator. And we've also got several requests under the uh public safety budget um for increased staffing in our well, for law enforcement. Uh, I see these two as coordinating. These are safety issues. And when I think of the victims assistance, that too is a related safety issue. People are injured through no fault of their own. Uh, they need help getting through the system. I am not all fired up about increasing taxes or increasing the county budget. But I think that we have a duty to look out for people who need our help. And in discussing this with the county attorney, that's, that's what this particular FTE is about. It is to help people. And these are not people who are the bad guys. These are the people who are the recipient of the bad guy's actions. And in order to get them back on their feet, in order to get them back into be taxpayers and contributor, contributors to our society, I think it would be a good investment to provide them with the assistance they need to get them back on their feet. And that's a convoluted way of saying. My first reaction was, by golly, we don't need no more darn lawyers. However, uh, this victim assistance coordinator is not another attorney. This is uh somebody I think of as a, a hand holder, somebody who's going to comfort and coordinate and help people who have been injured through likely no fault of their own. Um, I think we should fund that.
Thanks, Commissioner. I, just a couple of points I want to make and Mr. Cornwell, you can help me with this. Our, our target, our minimum target for reserves is 25%.
Correct.
Right now, we sit at 26.9%. So there's 363,411 dollars over that targeted reserve or minimum targeted reserve. So potentially, and um, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Rolf in that. I don't want to, you know, raise more taxes where we don't need to. So we, within our existing funds and our existing budget, potentially, if it was a priority of the commission, we could fund that position out of this 363,000. And my greater question is our ability to sustain that. So this is coming out of the general fund and it would be uh responsibility of that general fund to support that year after year after year. So likely um, we'd be able to do that.
Yes.
Yes, we would be able to, if that was a priority, we would be able to do that. We might not be able to do some other things down the list here, but we would be able to do that without raising uh taxes further.
Correct. And ju- just to refer back to Commissioner Rolf, it, it's just, you're trying to fund many different resource or areas and departments and, and we can maintain this. It's just, just know that there, you know.
Yeah, there might be something else we can't.
Right.
Yeah. So um, it isn't an increase. It, it already exists. This um funding is here if we want to use it for that purpose. Um, so it's not, it wouldn't be an increase in taxes.
Can I ask, I've got another question. Could we go back to the county attorney? I remember we had a discussion. A question is asked by Commissioner Rolf about, do you have any idea on where we could get this money? And the county attorney did not have a, a specific suggestion as to where they could get some of that money. And I'm wondering if we could ask him to go back and sharpen his pencil and see if there was money or at least part of this. Um, maybe they could get some um out of a state grant or out of a, someplace else. So $90,500 as, I mean, that's not an ungodly amount. However, it's an ongoing amount. And if the county attorney could get by with an, a half FTE for the victim assistance coordinator, or if he could find another way to uh to get money into that pot, would that address part of our issues regarding increasing tax burden versus um, our responsibility as a society to help these people? Is there any other place that we could ask him? Could we go back before we finalize this and say, you're, would you be willing to accept half a loaf rather than the whole thing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we, we, we could take the approach of not approving this right now, suggesting not approving this, but with the caveat that we would do, we would um work with the county attorney's office and maybe grants with Ann McCauley and see if there's any way we can find additional uh funding sources for a position. And, and if that is the case, uh, they, they could come to you later in the year within fiscal year 25 and ask for a budget amendment. So if you.
To augment whatever they
Yep.
come up with.
If, if you wanted to, you could do that or you could just approve it. And, and if you do approve it, remember that, that'd be a deviation off of my projected cash balance. So the cash balance that is projected to have a over reserve of 360,000, it would go down to 273,000.
So you look at page three, the very bottom right number. That's the projected reserve balance. And it would cut into that. So um, that is one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could just add to your discussion, Commissioners. Um, budgeting is sometimes challenging, right? Sometimes these decisions are very difficult. It's the commissioner's prerogative. Budgets are all about trying to find the balance between revenue and providing, providing services and programs. And um, uh, oftentimes it's difficult, you know, to say no to requests. Uh, I just want to assure you that none of these recommendations have been made lightly. Uh, and um, I know we're focused on um, a, a lot of good logical discussion you're having, which is about the impacts on the general fund and on our cash carry forward, and we should be. But I just want to back up a little bit and just remind you, you know, that the message we sent out was no new positions for this year. But of course, the commissioners can deviate from that. And along those lines, I just wanted to emphasize again, you've already heard it from Mr. Cornwell and you know this. Our budget is, is not a, a fixed object. Uh, it can be amended. It can be, uh, transfers can be done throughout the fiscal year. If there's a need to, if grants are obtained, we can adjust the budget to that effect. If, if um, if any of our departments come up with some unique program or find some funding that would allow them to add staff, the commissioners always have the flexibility to change the budget to accommodate that. So I just wanted to throw those few comments at you for your discussion, your deliberation. And um, uh, whatever you decide, of course, is what we'll implement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Rolf.
Hey, you know, I really appreciate uh the, the discussion here and I, and I I think that there should be an op, an opportunity for, for um different departments to, to go out and look for funding. And, and I, I'd be very open to, if they can come up with funding somewhere else or, or even a, a great majority of it from somewhere else, then well, we can change the budget at that time. But I, I just think we're to a point where we've got to respect the pain that our taxpayers are going through right now with this inflation. And we've got to try to keep the, to keep the the cost to them down.
And I, I agree, Commissioner Rolf. Um, and I, I'm not talking about raising taxes or anything. This is already existing funding that, that we have and how we, how we use this uh last bit of funding is what we're really discussing. And I agree that if, if departments can, can find uh funding through a grant or whatever, the one caveat is the county attorney's office, for example, is fully funded out of the general fund. So all of those, anything that's there that has to be sustained from the general fund. So even if we got a grant for a couple of years or whatever it might be, we have to sustain it out of, out of the general fund. That is where that department is funded. Unlike public safety, it's funded out of specific, the major, great majority of it's funded out of the public safety mill levy or mill levies. So um, this is one of those funds. It's a hundred percent out of the general fund. And um, right now in the general fund, we do, if, if we chose to, we can save it as well, but if we chose to, we do have uh, a little bit of funding above the 25% minimum reserve.
Yes. And Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Again, just more information for your consideration, Commissioners. So I, I, I think this is clear to you, but I just wanted to make sure. So when we take a look at the county as an organization that's under your authority, this fiscal year, we have 394.06 full-time employees. That's the way, in, within our budget. And um, as you're considering, whatever, whatever your decision is, I want to stress the list that you're going through here, um, we're not recommending depriving any of our organizations of any assets or personnel or budget that they already have. These are new requests.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to really be clear about that. And I wanted to stress again, one of our priorities this year was to find the funding to provide a COLA, the cost of living allowance for all of our current employees. So I just wanted to bring us back and just, I know that's probably clear to you, Commissioners, but as you, as you keep considering this, these are new requests. This is not something that is being taken away that already exists within, within a department. Thank you very.
Thank you very much. And you're right. It is a very, it generally very positive. We are in a great financial shape as a county. Overall, everything's uh going well. So it's this, is these few uh requests that have to be um distressed. And I just wanted to have the discussion. I agree with you. We did say, you know, we're trying not to have any new FTEs. However, we said if there's a compelling reason and or a, a funding source out there, um, then we would consider it. So I was trying to address this just from a discussion perspective that um, the county attorney was trying to make a, make an argument that he had a compelling reason for us to consider this. So I just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence and talked about it and it sounds like uh, there's some um interest in at least exploring ways where I think Commissioner Payne said, and, and Commissioner Rolf, if there were some other funding or, and or savings that could be found somewhere in their budget that may be coming back to us and discussing that further. And uh, even if, like Commissioner Rolf said, even if part of it was um discovered through savings or something like that, or a grant or something that we might consider a budget amendment going forward. That was one, one piece of discussion. So Commissioners, I'll get off this if you'd want. If you want further discussion around this particular um one, I'm ready to move on if we want to. Ready to move on? Okay. Thank you. Um, go ahead, Mr. Cornwell. I guess we're, next we're talking about these capital requests of new, new capital into the Public Works.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. We have uh, on the bottom of that, I guess, first half of the first page, we have the capital requests for Public Works and these funds, this, this is the, the side of Public Works is, that is funded through the general fund. So the all-purpose fund is going to see these uh increases. So these what we saw was significant increase or requests for increase in those capital funds. Uh, and when we can just read them off, the 17,500 dollars from the administration, and that is to, to help fund for their master plan that they talked to during their, or talked about during their presentation. Bridge was asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. Uh, the Noxious Weed Department and was asking for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase. And the RID administration is asking for a ninety thousand dollar increase. And we're asking for, at this time to, to not approve of these increases. However, we've had, Roger and I have had some discussions with uh Public Works and, and we, we we have some homework to do. We want to, we want to get with them and talk about a longer plan, longer a strategy on how to approach the master plan and bridge and, and their capital improvement plans as a whole and see if we can come up with um strategies going forward on how to, to fund these. So as of right now, we're, we're not asking to, to approve of the increases, but we will be working with them to see if we can come up with other, other means.
Thank you. Discussion, Commissioners, around these?
Um, just to comment, I'm looking at these, the, the capital requests from Public Works and a significant amount of it is going to the master plan. And it's, and maybe I don't have a real clear understanding of what in, is involved in the master plan, but I think um, it is more than, it's over $200,000 and this is just for the plan, doesn't actually include building anything. Is that right?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, maybe I could speak a little bit about this. No, the, the plan has been done. The Commissioners. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, maybe I could speak a little bit about this. No, the, the plan has been done. The Commissioners provided funding to Public Works, and they went out and had a master plan designed by, I believe it was Slate Engineering. It identified four different options. They identified a preferred option for a master plan for the complex that we have out there off of Cooney. But the, the numbers for construction were extremely high, to say the least. They were, the, the probable cost estimates began at twenty seven million dollars and went up from there. But that's not what Public Works is suggesting to us. All right, we, we understand that we need to take a good, hard look at this. And what Ginny Chambers spoke with us about was that we are moving forward with Phase One right now. There are some tanks being moved to some different locations. The Commissioners provided funding for that. And now we want to have a good, we want to sit down and go through planning for what the next phases can consist of, and what kind of additional alternatives we can look at, given that plan. So Commissioner, let me go back to your question, which was, is this for the plan? It is not for the plan. It is for funding to begin making a difference out there with actual construction, changes to buildings or logistics or layout, that type of thing. And as Mr. Cornwell said, we had, we had the chance to sit down with Director Chambers last Friday and talk about this at some length. And what we're recommending to you today is to not proceed with these requests, but for us to spend the next several months working together to come up with primarily what would be good funding plan alternatives for phased incremental approaches to improvements to the complex out there. We do not want to turn away from the project, but we want to take a good, hard look at what we can and cannot afford, and where that falls into our priorities. And Commissioners, our Public Works Department is a very high-performing group of employees, and they're working hard on this, and we want to be supportive of that. But we have to balance that against what our financial realities are.
Thank you, Mr. Rolf.
Good night. Okay. The other part of this request has to do with the bridge money, a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm, is that, haven't we already done a bunch of bridge replacements and we're not done yet? What, could you give me a little information? I don't remember what she said they were going to do with it.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, yeah, it, it's ongoing work that the Public Works Department does every year, and we're still recommending that we transfer funds over for bridge repair this year as a part of their capital plan. But there's an, as you'll remember, what Ginny Chambers and Audrey Zachar presented to us was that there, there's a long list of work that they would like to do. So the request was to supplement the money that they already have with some additional money for capital for bridges. And again, what we're recommending to you today is that we continue to work with Public Works. There needs to be some more communication between Finance, Administration, and Public Works for the plan moving forward.
Thank you. Another comment, based on the testimony we heard today about the cost of, of construction increasing, and I was thinking specifically about the road improvement districts and how the cost of that has increased exponentially. And I think I have seen graphs and tables where occasionally the cost of those comes back down a little. So if we can postpone this a couple of years, is a chance some of this cost would not be as outrageous as, as it is right now. So I'm just thinking out loud about the best way to get there. That's all.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I, just to build on that, I think that's likely what's behind the requested increase for the Bridge Fund is that the costs have gone up significantly in order to get projected projects on the track for completion. Going to need more dollars to put in, and, and some of these will be used for match money for grants and those kinds of things. So it's just to try and build, not lose ground, I think, is probably a big part of that. And then the master plan. I understand the intent fully, that, that's how we do things around here. And I said that in, during their presentation, is if we're going to need a new fleet of graders, or if we're going to need a new roof on this building, or whatever, we save for it. So they're saying, okay, we finished our master plan. We have the preferred plan. Now, how do we actually accomplish some of the goals that the plan describes? We have to start saving for that. And so they're, they're proposing to start that savings account. And I get, so I totally get that. And I get the, well, we can only do what we can do. So I'm not sure that we're going to be able to fund it this year, but the idea of developing a real comprehensive plan for that savings account and how we're going to do that, because we need to, you know, it would be a waste of our time and money that we've spent on developing a master plan. We recognize that we're going to need some improvements down there. So the tanks, it's a great step. We know that we're in buildings that are modulars. One is an old trailer that we're in. We know that there's been issues with sewer and water. We know that some of the buildings that store equipment are aging out. We know that we're hurting for, you know, the sign, the proper number of restrooms per employees on that campus, those kinds of things. So we know we have some goals that we want to meet and fix, but it would be nice to get a really a comprehensive plan for that. You know, this year, we're going to save X amount because we're going to do this with that, or whatever that might be. So I get the idea of, of, let's take a pause and meet, develop a plan together with the Finance Office and CAO.
I have one more comment.
Yeah.
So, and I hadn't really thought about it this way. This, for example, the administration increase in the CIP transfer. So they're wanting to take this money out of their capital improvement plan money?
No, that, I'll, I'll try and frame it this way. So each one of the different sections or divisions under Public Works, they all have a budget, they all have a CIP. And so they'd all have a percentage of, of the responsibility for the new improvements that might be coming in the master plan. So they all have to save something. So this is kind of the breakdown of, we want to, this.
So they're actually wanting to put money into savings?
New, new money into savings. They want new money from the general fund to put into savings for accomplishing the goals that are described in the master plan. And that's a phased process. I'm simplifying things, but that's essentially.
But that's what I, so it isn't that they're going to go out and, and this money is not necessarily to be spent this year. It's to be socked into the savings account, so that when the time comes, they want to do it, they've got it.
Right. So.
Okay.
Three years from now, they think they'd have enough saved to implement Phase One, they want to start saving now for that. And that's kind of the idea. I, I don't know if it's three years, I'm just making that up, but it's, yeah, savings account for.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. I was, I didn't.
And so what Frank and Roger are saying is that they'd like to say, before we do that, we want to sit down with them, develop a real comprehensive plan for, for doing that, and come back to you with, hey, this is how we'd like to start that savings account for accomplishing the goals of the master plan.
I think I got it. Thank you.
Anything you want to add, or you're good?
No, I think, yeah, I think you've all hit that pretty well.
Okay. Did, did we describe that accurately enough?
Yeah, yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. Anything more from either of you? Okay.
It's a good thing we have a lot of institutional knowledge.
And we'll stop here.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, on to the next one. I think we can move the Big Sky Rail Authority. I think at least two of us are not interested in funding that.
Okay.
So we can probably move on.
Easy. Okay.
Page two.
Page two. So the first item that we are recommending not to approve is the increase, the requested increase for historical preservation that would move, boy, I'm trying to remember. Oh, yeah, six hours to ten hours, so at, at the cost of seventeen hundred dollars and seventy, or seventeen seventy. We're recommending not approving that FTE increase, and then we're also recommending not approving, oh, do you want to?
Yeah, I want to discuss that for sure. This, this is one of those that I'm absolutely for, because though I know the direction was no increase in FTE, the caveat is unless it's funded and or there's outside funding. And so this historic preservation division, if you will, of planning was fully funded on, well, all but twenty thousand was funded by the county. Now, this year, the city has agreed to fund half of historic preservation. So our cost is going to be reduced by almost fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Over sixty thousand.
Over sixty thousand dollars of decrease that we're saving this year. And so a seventeen hundred dollar increase that's essentially shared is.
Just to clarify, so the increase, the total increase would be thirty four hundred dollars over the year.
So this is our.
This is, this is our half of, of that increase. I do believe the city would also have to agree to the increase. We had this meeting, we had this discussion during their joint meeting with them. So it would be, if you.
But even with this increase, we're essentially saving sixty thou, over sixty thousand dollars still. This year.
There's additional sixty thousand dollars coming in from the city. They have agreed to, to move to half. Yeah. To fund half the, the historical preservation.
So this is, this increase is fully funded, and I recommend that we.
Question, question, if I might, so the, we're putting in eighty thousand right now. Is that right?
Right now, we're over.
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred thousand.
Over a hundred. The total budget is a hundred and twenty plus.
Yes, yes.
All right. So we're going from a hundred and twenty plus back to sixty?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so. So we still have a huge savings, and it's been multiple years that Historic Preservation has asked for these extra hours because they're swamped with trying to process all of the requests that they have. So I hope that we'll approve this. This is an easy one, from my perspective.
So the bottom line is, it's still seventeen hundred and seventy dollars that we will take out of the.
It would be out of the planning budget.
Out of the three hundred and sixty three.
No.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the, the items on page two do not affect the All Purpose Fund, the general fund balance. This, none of this would affect that. This would affect the Plannings Fund balance. And they, they have a, a very healthy cash reserve, so it, it would have a minor impact on their overall budget.
And that's what I'm trying to say is that.
If they have a very healthy cash reserve, why do they need another seventeen hundred dollars?
It has to be approved.
It'd be the seven.
They can't add the FTE, the hours of work, without getting it approved. That's what I'm saying. They don't need the, they don't need new money from us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's not new money. It's, it's, what is, the, the request is to be able to spend the money that is within their budget. On a new, on a point one FTE. And actually increase FTE, actually, too. There's, there's two, two prongs to this. This would increase our FTE by a point one and increase the budget by one points, or one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, I'll let it go.
And right now, we're spending hundred.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand. We're going to reduce that to sixty thousand-ish.
Mr. Chair.
Even with this request, yeah.
If I could just add to, Commissioner Payne, I just wanted to point out that, it's probably clear to you, but I think the point that Mr. Cornwell was trying to make was that this is from a different pot of money, if you want to think of it that way. Our general fund funds certain parts of our organization, but we have other funds which fund other parts of our organization, and planning is one of those other parts of our organization. And, boy, Commissioners, sorry to, I don't mean to come across in any way negatively, just, these are decisions that we'll implement. But one of, one of the things that the, the discussion about reserves and our fiscal policies aside, you are also our public policymakers when it comes to the larger issue of growing the size of staff or growing government. And I know that you all have different opinions about that, but whether we grow it by two thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, it would still be growing the size of our government when we approve adding hours or adding staff, that type of thing, separate and apart from the, from the reserves discussion that we've had. So I've just heard different points of view, as I've spoken to you as individual Commissioners, about how you feel about that. And I just encourage you to fully discuss this with one another and let us know what you'd like to do.
Well, we've full, we've also had full discussion that if it's funded, and this is fully funded by partnership with the city, they're taking on half of the cost of this, this department, this division of this department. So this is a fully funded request, in essence, by outside money. So.
Another question. So the money that is in the other funds budget, which is not the same as money from the All Purpose Budget. The All Purpose Budget is funded through tax, through property tax.
Primarily, yes.
And the other funds budget is not.
This, this, some, some budgets, they are also using property tax as well. Planning's budget is using some property tax. Mostly, they use the local option tax as the lion's share of what is funding their fund. And they have some, some other smaller sources of, of income, but primarily, it's, it's the local option tax that pays their fund. They also charge for services, and that offsets costs as well. But it is their own, it's their own pot of money. It's their own pot of money. So, and they, they just, they have a, they have their own property tax receipts, just like the general fund or the All Purpose Fund does.
Okay.
Much smaller piece, though.
So Commissioners, your thoughts? Can we move that to the approved column, or how do people feel? I would like to.
Okay.
I agree.
Move to approved.
So moving down further, it's very similar discussion that we just had with the Historical Preservation. Public Health Water Quality is also asking for a, a increase in FTE for a staff that's working part-time right now, that would incur a cost of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars. They also have a fund, they have, it's usually, theirs is primarily funded through charges of service, and they've, through the years, have been well-funded and, and had a healthy reserve as well.
And so what was the reason for not approving this request?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, again, it was just based on the philosophy of what we heard from the Commissioners. We felt like we heard a strong message to control cost, particularly personnel cost wherever we see that. So that, that was part, probably the primary part for the recommendation. But I concur completely that this is a separate source of funding. It's fully funded. It has no dramatic impact on the, it has no impact on the general fund. And there, there's very little downside to approving this, other than what I tried to speak to a moment ago. Anytime we increase hours or increase staff, it gets, it increases the activity of our government to some degree. Thank you.
So this is also fully funded, and, and it is funded by the district fees that they have, and it is sustainable, and it's been approved by the Water Quality Protection District Board, which I think you said on, Commissioner.
I do. That's why I want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, and it, it's sustainable. It doesn't impact the general fund. And I think, again, I'll repeat that we said no new FTEs unless it's fully funded or funded by another source, or there's a compelling reason, like, you know, our workload has grown this much, so we can't do it with this many employees. We need another employee to do that. So we had those caveats in the no new FTE discussion. And so this is one that, again, doesn't have any impact on, and they have the funds for it, and they need the work. So I'd request this one be moved to the approved side as well. I'd request this one be moved to the approved side as well.
I can second that. I, I sit on this board and this is pretty darn important.
So moving on to the. District Court, they're asking for a standing uh, master clerk to move from a halftime FTE to a full-time FTE. At the cost of sixty-six thousand dollars. Note that. Due to the standing master coming on board with the county, we have seen a sharp increase in uh, jury trials. And. With the jury trials, there's usually a portion of those that are state jury trials. And we get reimbursements from the state of Montana and we saw a significant increase, we've already saw this practice happen. We were doubled, we went from sixty thousand dollars in twenty-three to a hundred and twenty-three. Thousand dollars to date.
In revenue.
In revenue.
New revenue.
New revenue to the, to this fund, um, so around sixty-six, sixty-five thousand dollars, we're. Estimating of new revenues that could offset these, these costs.
Could you explain to me why having a standing master has led to more jury trials?
The way I uh, read into it is. The standing master, and maybe these guys can help, uh, the standing master has been um. Allowing for more room for the other judges to take on more work, and so the standing master is. Uh, is creating more um. More economies of scale at the, at the department.
There have been more cases adjudicated.
So there's this.
So the standing master can adjudicate cases that were formally um. Adjudicated by the district court judges?
Yes.
Is that right?
Commissioners, and yeah, I, the standing master certainly helps facilitate judicial economy. And so I think, you know, for a most part, the standing master can say, okay, well, I'll take these sets of hearings this week, and that allows the court to say, okay, perfect. Instead of setting a jury trial out in September, they can say, okay, I can do this now today, so. Uh, it's been a.
Okay, so, the standing master does not cause more jury trials. The standing master allows. For. I, I'm thinking about Lucy and the cupcakes going on the conveyor belt. That's kind of, you know, the, the way the, our district court has to do the, the work it does, so. A little stuff to the standing master, and that way they get the more jury trials.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think it, it's additional capacity because of the standing master.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, maybe I could just read from the budget book, what was given to you by Angie Sparks. It states, Judge Roe has taken over several hearings to help open up schedule for the other judges to hearing jury trials. Criminal trials by law unless waived must be heard within a reasonable time, depending on whether it's a misdemeanor or felony. Judge Roe is anticipated to take over Behavioral Health Treatment Court as well as some jury trials. In return, this has opened up more time for jury trials to be heard by the four district court judges. That's part of what she.
And so, that sounds to me like a compelling reason to, to add this FTE. The, the behavioral health issue is one that's constantly in front of us, it needs attention, um.
Well, just to give a little more context, I think last year when we um, approved the halftime clerk for. Standing master, we said we will reassess this year to see if that, if that is enough, and they're coming back both. Uh, the standing master and Angie Sparks have come back to us and said, it's not enough, we need a full-time person, we need a full-time clerk for this. Like, like any other court, uh, because the numbers are there and as Mr. Cornwell said. They came to us with, we have revenue source for this essentially, that because of the increase in activity in the court and the, the standing master has. Helped to create, um. There is an increased revenue, and so it's up to almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year now. And so this position can be nearly fully funded by uh, that increased revenue. So there's an, there's a revenue source, there's a need, compelling need, and uh. So those were the two criteria that, that we were trying to say needed to be there in order to add. FT, and they're talking about adding just a half, uh, half position, they have a halftime position now, they want to make it full-time. So for me, uh, it's pretty easy to see that working.
Yeah, question if I might.
Sure.
Uh, Frank, where, where does that show on page three, is, is that the?
Cause it's not in the.
Governmental transfers or the charges for services or?
So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the, this, these cash flows would not show up in that, on that page three. Um, the category that would show up under would be. Uh, miscellaneous, I believe, on, on, but it would be within the dis- uh, district court's budget. And the district court's budget. Uh, clerk, uh, sorry, the clerk of district, uh, and they um. I just looked at their, at their cash budget and I just did a projected cash flow and they're, they're gonna end up having. A significant amount of cash at the, at the end of this year, and so this is actually something that. Would help manage their cash budget down to a manageable level, because it is, I think at the end of this year, I'm projecting them to be just over forty percent. Um, so thi- this is kind of a different new challenge for them, because we really don't want to have big, big cash balances, so this would help manage that. As well, um. Just, just to note, I didn't, I didn't bring their cash balance, but I, I do know that they have a healthy one, similarly like the uh. We've ran into in the past with water quality is, they've just, they have this big cash balance, so right now. This would be something that could offset that cost or uh, offset.
So it, it really hasn't shown up here yet in the, in the projection?
Uh, it, uh. This projection on page three is, it doesn't relate to their budget, so they have their own separate budget. So every, everything on page two is their, their own fund, their own cash flow, is, it wouldn't affect the all-purpose fund at all.
Thank you. So with that, Commissioners, I'd recommend we move it to the approval column.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, on we go to uh, the public safety fund, and this is a separate fund, this is not the general fund.
Separate fund, not the general fund, they have their own public safety uh, mill, and uh. We are recommending not to approve of their two FTE uh, increase for, for deputy positions. At the cost of a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, so that's the first item that we're recommending not to approve. However, we can work with the public safety uh, office and, and. See if there's other ways to get these positions brought in, um. I thi- I think we have some homework to do with them, uh, but right, as of right now, we're recommending not approving.
Is, is this where we've used, um, what do they call it, a cops fund before?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, yes, in last year, we had a cops grant. I think maybe two cops grants, and they were able to fund two deputies coming on and at a hundred percent. And after, I think, three years, then we take on a cost, but due to their mill level, mill levy increase, they were able to. To incur those new costs, um, I will say too, that these two new positions. Puts them uh, below the twenty-five percent that we, we recommend for a minimum with their ninety-day. Uh, reserve, so it puts them at like twenty-two percent, so it's, if they, if you don't. Approve these, then we will be at the twenty-five reckon, twenty-five percent, the recommended level.
Right, but if they get a cops grant, for instance.
If they got the cops grant, then they, uh, it wouldn't affect their cash balance and they would be.
Then it'd be okay to do it.
Yes.
It's what you thought.
But I think there's, I think with the cops grants, and we'd have to talk to Amicoli, but I think. You can only apply for those first, um, for so long, I thi- I think that they can only go back. They can receive them, but they can't receive them every year, they can, they can get them every three to five years, I believe.
So, could we look at, I, I believe that um, that. They're also asking for, for two new patrol cars. If we gave them one new FTE and one patrol car. Would that? Bring it more likely to be within their.
It would be closer to the twenty-five percent, uh, um, but it would still be below the twenty-five percent recommended level. Um, yeah, so it, it would be below the, the ninety-day reserved requirement.
So, um, just for discussion, um, I was thinking about another possible scenario, and I like where you're going, Commissioner Payne, um. Because the sheriff's office likely, and it's, it's one of the largest budgets we have.
Yes.
County, if not the largest budget we have in the county, so. There, there's a lot of, um, a lot of moving parts and a lot there, and out of uh. Fifteen or seventeen million dollar budget, almost twenty million dollar budget, um. Two hundred thousand dollar, around up to two hundred thousand dollars in savings somewhere in their operation and management. Might be doable. The other thing that is pretty obvious when I look at their numbers. Is that they have a significant amount year after year of vacancy savings, and we can't. Necessarily add FTE assuming they're gonna use their vacancy savings, but what the sheriff's office could consider. Is, um, wow, this position we've had open for five years or whatever, I, I'm just making that up, and we've never filled it. Why wouldn't we re-categorize that person to maybe patrol where we really need people? And within their existing budget, they could, between savings and re-categorizing people, they could probably. Mold out a couple of new deputies, patrol deputies, if they chose to, um. And then, uh, as new cop grants come available, because I think, yeah, you can only have so many at a time or only apply every so often. Um, they might be able to, to do that, um, I, I bet that they can find two hundred thousand dollars in savings and reorganization. Within that, now that's not something we could take care of today, for example, because they'd have to, if they wanted to reorganize or change. Around, they'd have to work with HR and re-categorize positions and all of that, there's a process for that, but it is possible. That they could do that within their existing budget they have right now, I think that last year alone, they had. Several hundred thousand dollars in vacancy savings.
Yes.
Now, that doesn't mean, some of those positions, they probably really need to fill because they need them, you know, if it's like, whatever. I don't know what they all are, but they, they need them probably, but there might be a position or two in there that uh, could be re-categorized, and then. You find savings, boy, we don't need this many paperclips over here, this many, you know, whatever over here. And, and they find enough savings to fund these two positions, within a budget that large, they probably, working with Frank and the new finance. Person at, at the sheriff's office, I bet they could find the dollars to pull this off, and they could come back to us and say. Hey, we want to do a budget amendment, I add these two positions, and we could approve that somewhere during FY twenty-five. Um, if we're open to doing that, not approving it now, but if they want these, find it within your budget and come back to us with a plan to do that. I'll bet you nickel they could do it. That's as far as I'll go. So I don't, is that sound like something, a scenario that could?
I like.
Commissioner, what do you?
So you're, you're, you're recommending at this time to leave things the way they s- show there.
Yeah.
With four items not being, not being approved.
Right, that would be my, a- and I'm, and I'm mostly focusing on. The one ninety-six, which is the two deputy positions, they want two new FTEs. And right now, if we approved what they have on here, they're asking for, in my discussions with Frank and Roger. Um, they can't sustain it, so that would bring them below the, the twenty-five percent savings. And you project it out a couple of years and they're gonna be using their reserves and digging into them further and further and further to keep these positions funded. So they either have to find savings uh, somewhere, or we have to add new dollars, and. I don't think we're up to adding new dollars for new FTEs, so within what they have, and maybe reorganizing a little bit. They can probably find the dollars they need to add to new patrol officers or deputies. If I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we can do, we can go back and we can maybe develop a, a strategy to be able to bring. Back to you guys that uh, that could bring on two new uh, deputies, but I thi- I think we gotta. Work within the means that we have, um, and, and try to stay above that twenty-five percent, and right now, um. Uh, as the way it was presented to us, it's, it's not a sustainable budget with, with those two new FTE, um. It, so, we, we, but we do believe, just, just like you guys, that, you know, it's a very important. Department and we want to make sure that they are serving uh, the public a- as best they can, so I think that we can do some. Do some work with them, work with the new uh, finance coordinator and, and see if we can, can help them out here and. Uh, and like Chairman was saying, it's a very big budget, so I think there's a, there's quite a few levers within that budget that we might be able to. Pull on and, and see if we can get something going, and, and I, just to point out, Commissioner, we, we haven't focused on the other three items quite yet, so.
So. I don't know if you have further thoughts about those two positions, the one ninety-six that they're proposing, but. That was just what, when I was.
That was, it's been an interesting discussion and, um, I hope that our friends over there at Public Safety. Recognize that this is not as black and white as it might seem, and we're wanting to encourage them, but. They've, you gotta get behind this program too.
Well, I want to give them what they need, but we can't do it at the peril of their budget, so if it's not sustainable, we can't do it. So I think they're gonna have to find some savings or something, and, and again, we're trying to make sure that we sustain that twenty-five percent. Reserve for those times when we absolutely need it and or in between the taxing cycles that we rely on those dollars to. For their.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we do not want a, a, a fund going negative due to waiting on taxes to come in, so ninety-day reserve is. Is very important.
Yes, thank you. Anything else about that? Okay.
Makes sense.
So leave it where it is for now and then, okay, let's move on to the next.
So the next item was they, the, the Public Safety Fund was asking for an increase, a forty-eight thousand dollar increase in travel. Uh, there was fourteen thousand dollars within that travel increase, uh, that we, we would like to, to not approve. We think that m- most years' travel budgets come under, they, they usually they're. The departments do a really good job of finding savings and working within the means of those budgets. The, the, as you can imagine, the, the Public Safety Fund has a significant amount of training and travel that, that they do, that they need every year. Um, but just like any other budget, they, they, they come under, and I, I don't think that they need. The room, the, this additional fourteen thousand dollars, I, I don't think it's necessary uh, in order to achieve the travel that they, they are requesting.
Thank you, any questions about that?
The third item that we're not recommending for approval for the Public Safety Fund is a uh, mental health. I gotta, where does, mental health professional, um, to be funded by the opioid, opioid. Grants that we're receiving from uh, opioid settlements, the recommended, recommendation is to not approve this, however. When they go through the process and get the grant approved, it'll just be like any other, like a public health. Grant that comes through and you guys would approve a budget amendment at that point in time, so it's not, it's not like we're saying you can't have this ever. We're just, we're saying like, it's not a. It, it's better just to not have it in the budget right now and just go to the same practice that we, we do with all the other funds is, is, is. If you haven't been awarded the, the grant, or you haven't experienced a long history of receiving those grants. Um, then don't, don't include it into your, into your budget until you. um, then don't, don't include it into your, into your budget until you receive the award.
So this could happen, it just
Absolutely.
Doesn't need to be part of the budget right now.
My only question, I guess, would be um, is it sustainable long-term? You know, uh, if we get a grant for one year, um, I mean, we're talking about adding a, adding a mental health professional, an actual person, aren't we?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's a contract, but it is a person. Um, a contract with a, a, a mental health professional to come in and uh work with the staff and ma- and help them through the, the mental health issues that, that comes with the job. And it, it is something that you actually, I thought of this coming into work this morning. I was thinking about this position that it would, it is something that um would go away with the, the opioid funds. When the opioid funds run out, the position would no longer be, or the contract would no longer be funded. And it would, it would also, unless they can find it within their current budget. They might, they have a large budget like we've been talking about here, that they might be able to go and find savings within their budget and through the annual increase. So it's, it's not a, it's not something that they um absolutely couldn't sustain in the future. That there's, there's probably uh sustainability's uh measures that they could, they could take to, to alleviate the, the pressures of the one twenty.
Is, has there been any talk of maybe trying to combine this uh contract with contract for someone to do mental health valuations of, of detainees?
The Commissioners, uh, I have not heard that discussion. Uh, when I first saw their budget, this is the first I've seen this request. I think that a lot of the, the details within this grant will probably be worked out through the grant process. So po- possibly, if they wanted to split that with, with them um, and, and have those funds go towards the detainees and the, and the detention officers. That, that's something they could work through, but I think that through this budget right now, I don't, I don't think it's, this is the, this is, this, this is the means to, to kind of evaluate those, that, that grant right now. So once you get it, you, you're going to be able to go evaluate it and, and kick the, kick the tires on it. And, and, and I think, I believe, Commissioner, you're on the, the um, the board that would approve that. So we're gonna, more to come on that.
We're kind of talking about two separate things here too, the, the funding source, which they're proposing to use, go after opioid funds to fund it. Um, but in listening to, to them over time, they've really been trying to, like other law enforcement agencies have tried to develop a, a I guess, uh, like they're talking to a mental health care program, if you will. And, you know, they see all kinds of traumatic scenes, as well as maybe participate in a traumatic event. Um, and I know that they've wanted to uh have availability of mental health professionals that are kind of focused and geared toward this. And there is a couple of programs that they've been interested in. I know that, I think it's Flathead County participates in one. And they have this contract with this company that comes in and does work just specifically for law enforcement folks or maybe other first responders. Um, and so I think that's what they're trying to, they've been trying to find a way to fund that for a number of years. Um, and so this was their latest attempt to, to do that and looking at opioid money. So it might be a way to do that.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear, we're not saying they can't go after this when, by not approve, I just, we're not telling them this isn't a good idea, whatever. This, this is just outside of our typical practice for, for
Yeah.
Um, developing a budget. So this will have a net zero effect on their budgets because they're going to have, they're going to have a grant revenue along with a grant expense. We'll take them both out. If you approve it, then we'll add them both back in. Um, or if they get the grant appro- award, then we'll add them back in.
Right, okay. Good to move on?
Yep.
All right, let's move on.
So lastly, the, the Public Safety Office is asking for a fifty thousand dollar, um, uh fifty thousand dollars of funds to go towards their patrol room renovations. I believe they have a large room that has no partitions within it. It's just big, open space. And I think that they're wanting to add um some, some walls and partitions and some, some new things to it to improve the space. Um, we're, we're not recommending approval here. Uh, this, this is something I think that needs to go through a, a proper uh, uh, process with the city because it is a ci- city-owned building, I believe, city-county building. So I think there's, again, more homework to do with, with this one. I think Rod- Roger, do you have anything to add? Same thing, so.
So they may have money within their budget to find, allocate to this or do it over time. But going through a process with um city building, city-county buildings apartment and developing a plan is kind of what we're, we're after.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, so that's the end of the non-approved. We did move several over. Back to the front page. Is there anything further in relation to uh the ones that we talked about on the front page before we talk about the, the health fund? That's our last remaining item to discuss.
Mr. Chair? I don't, I don't know if you want to discuss it now or wait until the end of the meeting today, but uh, I'm just going through my notes. Um, and maybe this is just my lack of clarity. It's not clear to me where we landed on the county attorney's requested new position.
Right.
And I don't know if you want to discuss it further now or wait till the end of the meeting.
Um, I think if
We, we're gonna let him have it.
We weren't gonna, or we're gonna?
We're going to. Um, there is
Is that the district court?
No, no, that's on the front page. County attorneys asking for the victim assistance coordinator.
Yeah, okay.
Out of the general fund.
I think between the original, excuse me, I think between the original draft we had uh, that one of those items was moved on to the second page. So that's maybe the confusion.
I think she had.
Yeah.
You have the
This was
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah. Move, what do you mean to the second page?
Oh, well, the original copy of this we got a few days ago had some of the second page stuff on the front page. It's, so he didn't know what version you had. You have the latest version of it. It's all good. Okay, so what we might consider though, in this next discussion, might make a difference in um this uh reserve that we have, the three hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and eleven over the, that's what's over the, on the third page, bottom right. We want to be at, at a minimum of twenty-five percent. Right now, we're at twenty-six point nine percent. So this, this discussion about the group health fund might affect that. So, which then in turn could affect what we do with the county attorney request, if there's money there or not. So um, maybe at the end, I guess is where I'm going. So let's talk about the, the health fund. So where are we with it and why are we asking for this?
So as, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, we know that uh, their group health fund has been experiencing a significant increase in the past couple of years, maybe three years, in claims. Um, it's just, it's just an unfortunate side effect to
This is the, sent the county help.
The count, the group, the, the county uh health fund, which is self-funded or self-ran through the county. And um, we manage it all through, through the county with Carrie DeRozier, our H R director, and with my help. The, the fund has seen significant challenges for the past two to three years. And we've been fortunate enough to be able to offset the additional claims with ARPA and CARES and other, other funds. Um, and which has allowed us to keep our permissive levy, which also adds funds to this group health fund. It's just revenue to it. So it's a, we've been able to keep it at a uh, about two million dollar level a year. And it's just, and as we never maximize it out, year in and year out, this thing's been around for decade, over a decade. And the county has never maxed out this uh permissive levy that helps augment the cost. Um, it is something that we have talked about through the years. Uh, I think Nancy Iverson, my predecessor, saw that this was, this was something that was going to come up. She warned me when I came on, Rogers brought this up with me, that this, this is something we needed to, to look at. And I noticed it right away, that this fund was going to need some help. And, but it would, we've been fortunate, we've been able to offset the costs, like again, like I said, with ARPA, CARES, I think L A T C F funds, these new COVID funds. Um, but now with those funds being gone and dried up, the, 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 the way that we can close the gap now is by increasing or maximizing the, the permissive levy by a, a million dollars. And that should close the gap. And along with, we have uh Carrie and Roger and I have met multiple times. And we've, we've worked at uh finding other cost savings, putting, increasing deductibles, increasing um, certain little costs and, and trying to, or reducing costs here and there. We've also reached out to a, a company that would help us out with the uh prescription costs. And they were able to reduce our produce, oh, by about four hundred thousand dollars uh, our pres- prescription costs. Um, but we needed that because we, we, we need all of that, including about a million dollars of additional revenue from the permissive fund to be able to keep the group health fund uh fully funded for fiscal year twenty-five. I know that we have, um, we've had discussion, Roger and I and others have had discussion that we could do other augmentations. There's a little bit of room within the general fund to maybe not use the entire permissive levy. Maybe we can step ladder this into um, over the years so it, so that our taxpayers don't see this big increase, which is really not a huge increase. It's got about fifteen dollars on, on an average house in, in uh this county. That's what the increase would be. Um, also, it but, but we do have other levers that we can pull on. We have a contingency fund that is about just over a million dollars that we can pull some funds from there. And, and a little bit of funds from the general fund, so we don't have to do the full permissive levy max. So I'm just going to leave it up to you to have a little bit of discussion. We would be open to ideas.
Yeah, so prior to um discussing those options, just want to make sure that people watching and all of us are are in full understanding about what this is. So this, you talk about the permissive health levy. This is a levy that's in statute that counties use
Yes.
to fund health insurance for county employees.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add, most counties have this maxed out, especially the big counties. And I think a lot of the, there's the cities and uh those other community, those local government communities also have this permissive levy. Most of the large ones also have it maxed out. We've been very blessed to be able to, to say throughout our histories that we have never maxed this out. I brought it up with some other counties a while back and they, they, they were um very surprised that we have never maxed our, out our, our levy with the per- our permissive levy for our health fund. Um, and uh, it, it just goes to show how due diligence or due diligent the, the county has been in the past to keep those costs down. And, but it's, it's just an unfortunate event. It's just, we, we have more claims. It's not even, we talked to the, um, I'm trying to think, uh, Allegiance runs, is, is our
Third-party admin.
Third-party administrator. And uh, and it, uh, so they were, anyways, but forgot the point I wasn't making. But anyway, so the, the costs have been, um, oh, Allegiance was, made it clear to us because we asked them, was inflation the, the cause of this, of this issue? And they said, no, it's been claims, claims. And they have just increased and it's not really big, big claims. It's the claims that are happening in the middle of the road that, that don't hit our stop-loss level. And the, it's just, we just see multiple, multiple claims across, across the county. And so it's just been an unfortunate time. Hopefully, we will um see a reduction in that. We haven't seen it yet. But um, from what we hear, that these ebb and flow, you have high years and low years. And this is, we're just in a high.
So um, the bottom line is we need about a million dollar influx to that system to keep it whole.
Right.
Um, and we have about a million dollars of capacity within that permissive
Correct.
Levy that would make it whole.
Right.
Um, that would be, you're saying on a average house in Lewis Clark County, that would be about fifteen dollars a year increase to their property taxes. So, but there are, are alternatives. If we don't want to put that full burden on, on the taxpayer all at once, maybe wanted to phase that in. We might be able to, like we were talking about with the Public Safety, we might be, within the general fund, we might be able to find some savings here or there or reduce some costs in places and use some um, use some reserves that we've had. Uh, and maybe uh build that, not put the full burden on the levy this year, but do it over a couple or two or three years. Um, that's a poss- that's a possibility.
I agree. We, there's, there's a few other levers that we can pull here to, to help.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
If I could just join in and add a little bit more to it, Commissioner. So um, the recommendation that we've brought forward to you today, uh, to utilize our permissive tax levy to the fullest extent. Uh, some of the reasoning behind that is because that is a sustainable continuing source
Right.
For us to deal with this issue. Um, if, if uh the Commissioner, and, and we're very sensitive to uh Commissioner Rolfe, you had asked me uh, about this uh several times, and uh the other Commissioners have as well too. If we want to look at a different alternative, a, a different strategy other than using the permissive tax levy, I just want to stress, those are not continuing um revenue sources. Uh, let's say we did decide to use some of the contingency fund money or something along those lines. We could certainly do that. But the, the tax levy, I just want to point out, the reasoning behind that is that it's a continuing source for us to fund what we need to fund regarding our group health plan. The other thing Commissioners to keep in mind is that we are self-funded. So um, claims could go up in a given year, claims could go down in a given year. We would love to see the trend go down, but what we have not seen is that happen over the past couple of years. But the potential is for that to happen in the future. So just some things for you to weigh as you consider this. So uh, to just summarize again, our recommendation is to go ahead and max out the permissive tax levy. It is specifically what that tax levy is for under state law. If the Commissioners would like to take a, a different type of approach, um, such as a phased approach or, or stepping it in place over the next year or two, we could certainly look at that as well. And glad to discuss the details of that with you today too. Thank you.
So Commissioners, thoughts on this whole thing?
I'm, I'm struggling with that, with the idea of raising the, raising the tax for this. What, when you, when you use um, say it's fifteen dollars to the average homeowner, what, what um appraised value of a house are you talking about?
Uh, that's a five hundred thousand dollar home.
About five hundred thousand?
Yeah, and this will change as we get our certified values, but yeah.
All right. Um, will you add about fifteen dollars per year?
Per year, yep.
For two, and I, um, you know, the reaction we, we've seen from the local taxpayers to, to things, um, I think they're, they're hurting for the amount of taxes they, they've had to pay. Our, our tax increase has been pretty substantial. Or when you add all of the different parts of the government that use property tax for, for funding, whether it's the, the state school equalization, uh, the local school funding, the, the um, um, you know, the cities and the counties. Uh, I think here in our county, you know, average taxes went up uh somewhere in the twenty, twenty percent this last year. Um, of that, only about four and a half to five percent of it that came to
County.
Came to counties. The rest went to the others. Um, I, I guess I'm just struggling. I know the taxpayers are hurting. It would be, it'll be interesting to see what, what they do with the safety levy that the city has proposed and we'll know that. And hopefully by tomorrow morning. But they, how they've reacted to that. But I, I don't think in the 35 or so years that we've lived here, I've seen all of the mill levies go down like they did this last year. But I think that's a reaction that the people are are having to those things and did you, what other, what other ways of, of absorbing that? That money have you, have you looked at?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we have looked at increasing deductibles on the staff in which we have. And there's, that's the biggest, biggest one. And also adding additional costs to the, the departments as well because we had, we added $25 per per employee.
But if this, if we provide that, that it's, it's really coming out of the same pot essentially.
Yeah, it is.
The only, the only way to, to, to solve it i- is to add cost to our employees. You know, other, otherwise isn't that right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the, you, you can close a little, a little bit of the gap by adding more costs to the employees. But I think unfortunately, this, this is, it's, it's so vast that we couldn't find a million dollars to, to be able to offset by adding that to the employees. It'd be very, very difficult to do that. I actually, I, I don't think it'd be possible, but but there's, there's ways you can, you can do it incrementally. And I think that through the past few years, we have done that and we have offsetted a lot of the costs with new revenues from the employees. And, and, and then looking at other strategies to reduce the costs, specifically the, the biggest one that Allegiant just helped us out with was reducing the prescription cost by $400,000. That was we, that's a significant amount of savings, but we need every penny of that in order to sustain this fund. This is it, it would be, it'd be very difficult to come up with a strategy that would that would just put the cost on the, the employees. It just, it wouldn't be able to close the entire gap. So it, it's just an unfortunate situation that we're in and we are, we are working to, to look at all strategies, all, everything is on the table and, and hopes that we can get this, this fund stabilized and, and managed. So we don't have to worry about where do we find funds, you know, it within the, within the county.
If I can follow up. If I, if I remember the numbers right, we have something like 400 employees. Does our average employee have, have one, one more dependent on the, on the plans so that we have maybe 800 people covered on, on the plan?
Mr. Chairman.
For our, for our, our employees.
Yeah, I, we have a and, and Kerry DeRozier could bring those specific numbers to you. But I think if you were to look at the numbers, yeah, all 400 of us are on, are this plan. And then there's usually I think on average, yeah, at least one dependent on each one. But I don't, the dependents actually don't add too much cost to the plan. The the, we have been increasing deduction, the deductible on them as well and increasing costs on them. I think that but it's just been incremental and we don't want to shock the employees and, and reduce their, their COLA by too much by also increasing the costs of the healthcare on them or the healthcare plan or the group plan on them as well. So it's kind of a balancing act, but we have shifted costs around incrementally. It's not as, I know in the past that we were really, really favor, like really favorable to the employees, but, but in the last few years, it's those, those the gap between an unfavorable plan and a favorable plan like ours has really closed.
So the other thing about the total numbers is that peer view employees, Mako employees, Rocky Mountain Development Council employees are on our plan as well. So.
And, and do they follow the same prescription we do? Or, or do they, some of them have deductibles that are different?
No, I think they're on the same.
They're all in the, Commissioner, they are all on the same plan. They, they pay in just like, uh, just like.
So if we were to change deductibles, that it would be changing it for, for all of those people as well.
Yes, you're correct. Yes.
And, and if I remember right, we have something in the neighborhood of a thousand total employees is, or thousand total people on the, on the plan. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, you're right. I was just thinking that number is just somewhere over 900. Yeah, it's a pretty chunk, a pretty big chunk of, of, of people on it.
So the, the levy, the proposed million dollars on the, the health fund levy, that's what it's for. That's what ultimately sustains the program. So but it's a, maybe a big leap in, in one year. Potentially and so there might be a way to do this over two years or over three years. And use some one-time money to help until we get it to that point of sustainability.
Yes, Chairman. Yeah, that's, that's possible. We could also run into maybe the the environment will change and we'll have a reduction in claims and we won't have to go that route.
Thoughts? Any further thoughts about what we want to do? Cause we kind of need to get to a decision point here pretty soon. Commissioner, or Commissioner. CAO vault.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I just wanted to add something else to the discussion. So with this, within this fund that we're talking about, one of the goals that we have is to also be successful in building the cash carry forward or the reserve associated with our group health fund. We haven't been able to do that. You know how we've been talking so much today about how important it is to have cash carry forward or, or a healthy reserve in different funds? This particular fund has been extremely challenging over the past couple of years. Because of the heavy, high expenditures that we've been having to make out of it because of the claims that we have been getting under the, under the benefit plan that we offer, you know, for people who are on the plan. So the strategy also is over time, we would like to have some success building the reserve or the cash carry forward for this fund. We haven't been able to do that for the past at least two years. But that's one of our goals moving forward too. Just wanted to mention that as well too. But the recommendation for, before you today is intended to shore up this fund the way it needs to be shored up to make sure we can pay the invoices out of it that need to be paid. Thank you.
Further discussion about that?
Yeah, I just, like I say, I'm just, I'm, I really am struggling to try to add, to add extra taxes and I
So Commissioner, if we were to do half of what they're requesting this year, would that be more palatable?
So where would the other half come from?
Well, part of it would come from the contingency funds that we have and part of it would come from our savings here that we have in the 25. We want to, want to sustain 25%. We're at 26.9. Is that, am I right? Or what, you tell me where, where it would come from if we only.
Yeah, so, no, no. So Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, yes, if you, if you wanted to, if you wanted to implement this by shoring up with, with 50% this year, 50% next year, as you just mentioned, Mr. Chair. The obvious places we would go. I mean, well, the strategy that, that we would, we, we actually discussed this a little bit leading up to this meeting today in case the discussion went this direction, is that we would look to our contingency fund commissioners. And as a reminder, the contingency fund has, where we've placed funds from the LATCF funding source from CARES, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm using acronyms again, the C A R E S, the CARES funds. And also from some of the revenues we've gotten in from marijuana sales that were approved by the voters some time ago. So that fund, Mr. Cornwell, I believe has a little over a million dollars in it.
Correct.
So where, again, the strategy that we would look at to address the need to shore up this fund would be only half of what we've recommended for the permissive tax levy supplemented with other funds from the contingency fund. And then, and then the general fund as Commissioner Hunthausen mentioned.
Anything more?
I just the, the plan that we, the insurance plan we have for our employees is it seems to me it's, it's very generous and we pay it is possibly more generous than other insurance plans. Could we, should we be looking at a less generous? I mean, instead of we pay all of it, we cut back so that the individual pays 25% or 35 or something. So, so that the individual user ends up with the burden of more of their own health costs rather than the taxpayers having more of a burden. And I'm, I recognize that part of the appeal of, of working for our county is we have a good health service or a good health plan. And so maybe we don't have to offer as much in wages because we've got people want to work for the county because of our health plan and a retirement and all this. But is that a different way of looking at it or have we already been down that road?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, really great comments and, and we have been looking at exactly that. And it's a balancing act. We, we want to have an appropriate benefit plan for our workforce. And it's not just our workforce, as Commissioner Hunthausen mentioned. MBAC, RMDC, Mako, PeerView are all a part of our plan as well too. They, they participate in our plan. But taking a look at what our benefit plan cost is something we do continually. Our plan administrator is Kerry DeRozier, our HR administrator, and she's constantly monitoring it. What, what has been happening with our health plan is we have had a climb in claims experience. The claims that we've been getting have shown a trend that has gone up dramatically over the past two years. Again, we're self-funded. We've been hoping we would see that trend level off and maybe even go the other direction. It has leveled off, but it hasn't gone the other direction yet over the past eight months or so. So we're continuing to monitor that day in and day out. Commissioner Payne, your comments are very good. I, I don't believe that our benefit plan is outrageously generous. I think it's an appropriate benefit plan, very similar to what other employers offer.
So that's what I was going to mention. It's similar to State of Montana, City of Helena and other counties that are like counties. The other thing is that we have done exactly what, what Commissioner Payne just said. We've increased deductibles. So that's out of pocket for the employees. We've increased the some of the costs for some of the particular procedures, I think. And for dependable, so are depend, it's out there, dependents. So for children on the plan or spouses on the plan, those costs have gone up to help in to some, some degree. So we have increased the cost to the employee. What I would be reluctant to do is to erode the program much further and or put too much more on the employee. If we can at all help it. We've moved that direction some. It's been part of the, like you said, it's been a balanced approach of trying to find new revenues or increasing revenues versus increasing the cost to the, to the employee or those that are using the, the system. But for example, this year, we're trying to keep up with wages by offering a 3.5% COLA increase. If we take that right back by charging them for their health plan, it doesn't it doesn't help anything in terms of them being able to keep up the cost of living out in the world as well. And and in my mind, it would potentially erode our, our status as a preferred employer in the community and our competitiveness with those other entities. So yeah, I just, where I am, I think if we can try to find a way to get to this where we need to be for sustainability, that would be the best. And so if we can't stomach or don't want to put the burden of that full million dollars on this taxpayer this year that we spread it out and we use some of our savings that we have in the contingency fund and other places to put a one-time influx as we step up over the next year or two to get to that sustainable point with the, with the healthcare fund. That's what I would propose, but.
I'm, I'm not quite done beating on this old dead horse. I recognize Tom's comments about this is a permissive levy. We don't have to get the approval of the voters and we, in a time when property taxes is the, the, the big scary bear in the room and everybody or seems like a lot of people are very concerned about it. And so we get this one-time opportunity, by golly, we can levy more taxes. And I, so I certainly sympathize with Tom's remarks. And I don't have a silver bullet. I'm sorry. I just am. Unless we could you said that Ms. DeRozier has been looking at ways to limit outgoing or to limit the costs of healthcare that is covered. So your idea would be to
Well, I agree with Tom as well that
It's a scary thing.
Jumping, you know, all that on the taxpayer at once is not, not, maybe not very.
My concern is it isn't the amount, it's the perception that, and whether we increase their, this one time to pay for the, the health insurance and it costs the taxpayers a dollar or $10. In my mind, it's not the amount so much as it is the fact that we did it. I mean, we, we increased their tax, their property taxes at a time when they're not happy.
Right. And that is, that is our reality. But it also is for local governments. The legislature created this way to fund health coverage for local government employees. And this is the way they've done it. So we have not, we have tried to really keep that down over the years as much as possible. Matter of fact, we're one of the only counties that hasn't maxed out this tax levy. So in, in that same vein and in that effort to keep it from you know, jumping too fast, maybe we do it over a couple of years. You do it more slowly so that we're not putting that all on them at once.
Correct.
Would that get the job done?
Yeah.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. The proposed to do 500,000 increase on the permissive levy, 250,000 from the general fund, 250,000 from the contin, from the contingency fund. I believe would get us through fiscal year 2025. So yes, it would get the job done.
And you don't have a way of figuring out if that's going to, you know, next year, we're in the same position. We've got to.
Well, next year we do the other half.
The other half. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
And it would be for the maximum, there's no more we could do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. We could run into next year and, and be asking to reduce it. It, the, the reality of, yeah, this is how volatile this, this environment is. Yeah, it is. And that's the, the reality of it is, is through the years, you guys have reduced and decreased, this, this has been. reduced and decre- is, this, this has been something you've been playing with for, for years. It is, but it's always been below the max and, and, and at a very low level. And, and you've saved the county, the taxpayers, millions and millions of dollars because you've never maxed it out. Um, and, and it should be something you should be very proud of that it's been, it's taken you this long to get to this point. And it, it is truly impressive that you, that it's, um, and, and it sounds like you're not gonna max it out this year. If you split it with, if you're able to find internal funds and, and reduce it to only increase it to by a half a million, you're still below the max. And that's something that you guys have achieved year in and year out, which other counties aren't achieving. It, it's, it's quite impressive and it's something you should be very proud of. Um, and we work really, really hard to control our costs on there. We try to stay competitive with our, with our, uh, uh, employers that we compete with for employees. So it, it's a constant, it's a battle and it's, we're always trying to stay with, uh, within a reasonable amount. But it, it's been something that, when, like I said, I've talked to other counties. They've been blown away that we, we're, we're not, uh, we're maxing this out. So it's, uh, it's something that it's, in a weird way, is, is something you should be proud of that it's taken this long that, to, to get to this point. Um, and, and next year, we might, uh, I might come to you and say, you know what? This has been one really healthy year for the county and, and, and the other participants. We don't have to ask for an increase. It could, it could be, but we could come in and say, we, we need that other five hundred thousand dollars as well. But hopefully, it won't be the case.
If, excuse me, just thinking out loud. If, if we were to, um, I, I think in the private sector, you're gonna find that most employees pay a much bigger premium to get a, to, to get a health plan. And we really don't charge our employees very much for the health pla- for the health plan they've got. I, I think it's important we have a very good health plan. I think that's part of the appeal of keeping good employees, which we have uh, over the years. I, so I think it's an important thing. I, there aren't, I don't think there are too many plans where, where the employees don't pay more than what, what we're when, what we're asking. If we were to were to charge, uh, I'd like to spend a little time kind of thinking this through, but if we were to charge our employees, um, for every person that's on the plan, a little bit, a, a little bit of money, I don't know. Uh, what, what would it, what would it, have you played around with the idea of what it would cost if we, if we charged the employees? Eighty-five dollars per
Chairman.
Per employers or sixty dollars per employee, for, you know, per month to do it.
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner, the, we have played around with those numbers. And I know that this was one of the first challenges that came, when I came on, I, I went to Carrie and, um, what, what can, what can we do? And she all, I, just like you're doing right now, threw out some ideas, went through some more costs here, reduced deductibles there. And it was, it shouldn't have been surprising, but I was surprised by how little of effect it had on the plan. But it, it does have some, we're talking, when you do those kind of incremental adjustments, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions. So, and maybe if, if we're lucky, a hundred thousand dollars. But I, I think what we can do, I, we can work, we could still because this, for the permissive levy, this does not get officially approved until August or September. You can give us this direction to, to move on with the fifty-fifty split. And, um, and I can work with Carrie DeRozier and Allegiance to see if there's any other cost savings. And maybe by we're, within the next couple of months, we can see if there's anything we can do to reduce that, that increase.
Mr. Chair, I would li- I would like to spend a, a week really working on this to see if there's some way we can, we can massage this a little bit and make it a little. Um, I, I do wanna keep a good har- health plan for our employees. I think that's important in keeping good employees here. I think, I think in the long term, if we can keep good employees, we're saving our customers, I mean, our, our taxpayers' money because we're not spending so much time training new employees. So I think, I think that's a, that has to be a goal to keep good employees and to treat them well. But I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to spend a, a week or so kind of working on, on how we might massage this to maybe charge the employees a little bit more and as a part of, of the deal. And to pa- to possibly, um, and I don't, I don't, I don't want a big number, but I, but I, I, I'd like to look at a, at a way to try to work this out a little bit and not put, put it right back on, just because we can without a vote, add it to the tax base. I don't wanna do that unless we can't find any other way. Okay? If we could have a week or two to kind of work on some alternatives, I'd like that.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. And I think that we've been doing that all along. So if we, if we have the time, Mr. Baldson, Mr. Cornwell, in terms of the process, our hearing for the preliminary budget is set toward the end of the month, right? When?
Yes. I believe so, yeah. Uh, it's, uh, beginning of July, be the. Or is it the June twenty-seventh?
But I, I just would say, we've been doing this all along. I mean, part of the equation each year to even stay status quo, we've been adding costs to the employee. So it's the same thing charging the employee as it is when you raise the deductible or raise the out-of-pocket costs. And we've been doing that every year. We've been adding a little bit to that. So we have been charging the employees more every year. They've been taking on more of the burden for their healthcare every year. I would be reluctant to, um, charge them outright, like you ha- you get your, you get your paycheck and there's fifty dollars taken out for, for healthcare extra. That would be hard because we're, we're trying to keep their, uh, maintain their wages at a competitive place. And so we give a three point five percent COLA and we just take it right back. I, I'm pretty reluctant to do that. We have ways and forms of, we have some savings we can use. We have, you know, we combine it with, um, the levy, and I don't think we're just doing that willy-nilly. I think we've been discussing it heavily here. We've been discussing it for days. And, um, don't take it lightly for sure, but it is the form that we've been given in our form of government as a subset of the state of Montana by the legislature to fund health insurance for our local and government employees. That's what it's there for. So I don't wanna max it if we don't have to, but if it is part of the equation, I'm okay using it as part of the equation to get where we need to be. And, um, I think we've already been using the, the, uh, pressure on the employees every year. I mean, our deductibles have gone up. Um, the costs, I know one of my kids have been on there, the costs for them have gone up. Costs for my spouse has gone up if, if, uh, she's on there. Uh, so we've been paying more into the system to keep, that's just to try and keep status quo. So now
Yeah.
with these increased, uh, claims on the system, that that bottom line has gone up in order to just keep the fund whole. So we, we have to address that and
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree. And ju- just to note, when we put these budgets together with the, the this group, uh, insurance fund, we, we are increasing costs on the employees and it's, it's something that, but when we do so, we, we consider our competition. We look at the state, we look at the city, and we try to stay competitive. It's not necessarily our goal to, to be a better plan. It's just to stay competitive and not to increase the cost at a level that offsets, um, too much of their, the, the cost of living, cause like, uh, Chairman was saying, it, if, if we offset those costs with their cost of living, then they're not keeping up with inflation at home either. So it, it is something that is already built into it. We have a little bit of those cost saving, or not cost savings, but those, those offsets from pushing it on to the employees. That is baked into this request. Um, but what we can do, we can, this is an annual thing. Like, it's a cyclical thing. Next year, we're gonna have to consider this all again. And we can, we can talk about this, uh, in, in the long, long run and see if we can come up with uh, long-term solutions to, to stabilize.
Commissioner.
The three of us were elected to make hard decisions. If it was easy, they'd let women and kids do it. I, I know that's not a popular way of looking at it. However, I think sometimes we need to put on our big boy pants, make a hard decision. Okay. We have the authority to do this. This is what bigger, I mean, the legislature figured out a way to do this many years ago. This is not something new. And we've been hamming it along for all these years and trying to, you know, we haven't taken advantage. Okay. Maybe it's time we take advantage of the opportunity, uh, to provide appropriate medical insurance for our employees. Um, and the funding mechanism is it comes from the taxpayers. Now, all of our employees are also taxpayers, so they will help bear this burden. But rather than kicking the can down the road farther, let's take advantage of the suggested, um, where'd it go? The permissive levy for group health fund increase by a million dollars. If that's what it takes to balance this out. And then, as you said, next year, maybe it'll go down and this will go away. But for now, this is what we've got to live with. Um, and if the public, if the taxpayers, I don't expect them to like it. But they don't like it when we increase their taxes to fix the roads either, but they demand we have the roads fixed. So i- it seems unreasonable to me to try to piece this together. We have a, a legal method of funding this. Let's do it and move on.
Thanks, Commissioner. I appreciate that. I, I guess where I am, I am in the middle. Look at the, I'm in the middle. I'm, and my, my hope is that we could get to a place that we, we all move forward together. Of course, that isn't always, we're not always able to do that. And you're right, we had, we're here to make hard decisions, but wanted to have the discussions as robust as possible so that maybe we can get to a place where we all can move to get, move forward together. And, uh, maybe we can still get there.
Can we, can we, uh, I, I, I really appreciate what Commissioner Payne has saying. We've gotta, just to make a decision. I would, I would rather, um, try to split the cost over a period of time rather than do it all at once if we can. If we could do the five hundred thousand like was recommended, and then, um, where, where would we get the rest of it?
Uh, it would come from, uh, the, over the reserve amount, the, the two hundred and fifty from the general fund and two hundred and fifty from the contingency fund. And so that would, that would cover the cost. So that'd be five hundred thousand up to a million.
We could, we could absorb, we've got, uh, we've got three hundred thousand left in that.
Yes, that's where, that's exactly where it would come from.
And we have money in the contingency fund as well.
And, and then the balance in the contingency fund.
Right.
Would that be a, would that be a reasonable compromise?
It, it would be for me. I, I could move forward that. Half this year, half next year. We have savings.
Take a look at it next year and see where we're at.
What we're doing is we are.
We're taking, we're taking.
Out of a million, we'd do five hundred thousand in.
True, but that is the increase in the permissive levy.
Right, five hundred thousand.
We are doing this, gonna get painted with a black brush, whether it's half or all, but if it makes you guys happy, just do half. Let's do it that way.
Let, we'll do five hundred from the permissive levy and we'll take five hundred, probably, uh, it sounds like about three sixty or three fifty out of the, out of the, um, twenty-five percent.
Yep. So the, the, the remaining amount would be, oh, oh, boy, hundred, I gotta do math in my head, hundred and eleven thousand, hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, hundred, or whatever it is, two hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand out of the, out of the
So the extra.
Yeah, so you'd have a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and thirteen thousand. These guys do math better in their head, but, uh, they.
We're gonna take like three fifty out of the reserve and a hundred and fifty out of the contingency fund. Does that sound right?
Uh, two, two fifty out of the reserve.
Okay, two fifty out of the reserve. Okay.
Yeah, there, it's essentially, that's all, uh, in reserve, whether it's this or
Yes.
or the contingent fund. They're both, it's part of the, kind of the same reserve. So, um, we take it out of reserves and then the five hundred.
And then let's look hard at it next year and, and see, see where we're setting.
See if we can hold.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do that. I agree.
Yes.
Moving forward with that. Okay. You have your
All right.
direction?
Yes.
So that remains now back to the county attorney position. So depending on what we did there and how much was remaining, that would help us understand whether we could afford to support the county attorney request for that other position. So, Mr. Cornwell.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that would put you at a hundred and ten thousand in your reserve goal, over your reserve goal. So, um, if you were to fund the FTE, that would put you right at your reserve goal. I would say right at twenty-five percent.
Say, say that again, I'm sorry.
So if you were, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if, if you were to fund the county turn, the county attorney's request for the new FTE for the victim assistance coordinator, that would draw you down to about twenty thousand dollars over your reserve goal. So basically at the goal, at the twenty.
Be at our goal of twenty-five percent. You'd be right at it, just above it.
Okay.
So if we did that.
Is that the goal?
Well, the goal is to have at least twenty-five percent, um, yeah.
I think. It doesn't. So we can.
Right, we could.
Do the FTE for the county attorney's office.
We could.
We started out with two, three sixty-three, four eleven. Uh, of that, we're using, you're talking about using, uh, the county attorney's office for how much?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand, five hundred dollars.
Nine thousand, five hundred. So that, that brings us down to two, two hundred and, uh, sixty-five, right? Roughly.
It goes to the health fund, or most of that goes to the health fund, then
Yeah.
the rest out of the contingency savings account for the health fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could do that if.
Okay. It would draw you down with the, the new FTE. It would draw you down to two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. And then you take the, the remaining two fifty.
Yeah.
That will put you at twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars.
Above the twenty-five percent. Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Are you okay with that? And you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Cornwell, Mr. Baldson, you have your direction to our list? Pretty, you have it? You're?
Yes, sir.
Any question, any more questions? I, I mean, I'd like to just say thank you again to both of you. You worked really hard on all of this and, um, our departments and our elected offices. I mean, it's fantastic. We, I have a great. We have a great budget and we have a really good fiscal health for the county. And I'm just proud of the work that we've done. Go ahead, Mr. Balts.
Oh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I really appreciate you saying that. I agree completely. Want to thank Frank Cornwell and the whole staff and finance that worked so hard on this. I want to thank the commissioners for all of your time today. These discussions can sometimes be challenging. I really appreciate the discussions you had today and the direction you gave us. I do want to go over the dates that are ahead of us now, just very quickly. So our intention is for the preliminary budget meeting to come back before you on June 27. The final budget public hearing to be July 11. And of course, this is subject to the commissioners agreeing to these dates. And then as we do every year, it's typically the early part of September where we come back with the tax levies and we've targeted September the 10th for the meeting for the tax levies. And we'll also be having a compensation board meeting that will be happening a little bit later this month. Our staff is putting that together for you as well. So those are some of the future budget dates to look forward to, commissioners. And I'll be talking to you one-on-one about those as well to, just to reiterate those. Thank you again very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues. So because whenever we can agree and move forward together, even if we don't get everything we want, it, it really makes a difference to our community. It makes a difference to our taxpayers. It is, it is good governance. And so I just appreciate your, your.
Thank you. I, it's a pleasure working with you two, both of you. I, I'll tell you, I get frustrated when I see our national government not being able to do that. I think I'm, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we're able to sit down and talk about things we disagree on and nobody, nobody starts calling names. And I think that's the way it's supposed to be.
I knew I forgot something.
Well, thank you and thank you to our guides over here, our sideboards. We can call you all kinds of things. See, I'm calling names, look at that. No, I really appreciate your help and assistance. And with that, how about a public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment on anything that's not on our agenda today? Any public comment? Any public comment? No one is coming forward. Commissioners, again with gratitude, I will call us adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah.